So I'll do it just in case, is that okay?
Yeah, I think it's just worth to mention if somebody cannot hear you, they can put it in the chat.
Okay. All right, let's get going. Time's now six thirty. We would like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, Rhythm Select Board meeting. This is a hybrid meeting. It's open to the public and the public can join via Zoom. There was instructions on the town's website for the public to join. I will read this just in case as a preliminary matter. This is Select Board Chair Chris Gallo. Please permit me to confirm that all members in person has anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. I don't need to call up the members because they're sitting right next to me. The staff's also sitting right next to me. So what I'd like to do before we move on, the meeting is now in session. I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Legions and I'd like Michelle Ralphs to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Selectwoman Ralphs. This time I'm going to ask our clerk, Selectman Bill Harrington, to read the announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Rhythm Day and Road Race will be held Saturday, September sixth. Vendor registration is now open on the Rhythm Recreation website. The Public Health Nurse is holding community baby shower to help ensure expectant parents have essential supplies needed. The nurses will be accepting donations through August twenty-eighth. A complete list of items in need can be found on the town website. EverSource is continuing work on natural gas system improvement project along Creek and Lakeside Avenue. EverSource crews were temporarily reassigned to assist with the critical distribution system work in a neighboring town. As of Monday, August nineteenth, Creek Street detours will again be in place until approximately September nineteenth. Please watch for posted signage and police guidance and proceed with caution. Reminder about final road restoration. EverSource is responsible for restoring any paved surfaces we disturb, including road, curb, sidewalks. Temporary repairs will be made immediately after work is completed. Final restoration will occur in twenty twenty-six to allow for natural ground settling. If you have any questions or concerns about the work in your area, please call your EverSource construction partner, Patty Shaw Malaney. Patty can be reached at eight five five six four five two four two seven, Monday through Friday, eight to four. Cable Eight will be holding an open house fundraiser on Saturday, September twentieth, twelve PM to four PM, at six eighty-six, South Street.
Well said.
Sir.
Think just to mention of the Cable Eight Open House fundraiser, I believe if I'm not mistaken, we have some dignitaries in the room that are going to be in a dunk tank.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Right? Superintendent Alan Cameron, I believe State Rep Vaughn has said he would be in a dunk tank as well.
Okay.
As well, is that news to you? Someone told me that you said you would do that, and I was asked to do that as well. I was.
You didn't say he was doing.
I was asked to also participate in the dunk tank. So for all the people out there that might not like me that much, this could be an amazing opportunity to get me wet.
Longest line.
Well, just remember, I'm sharpening up my trash talking as we speak, so we'll have a great day for that. All right, so at this time, we're going to move into approval of the minutes, which looks like tab two. So at this time, chair and entertain a motion to approve the July eighth, twenty twenty-five, and August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, open session meeting minutes. Motion made by Selectman Harrington, second by Selectman Anderson. Any further discussion? Being none, would you say all in favor, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. I had to get, we don't typically, we're typically still on Zoom, so I have to make sure that I'm not screwing this up too bad. Let's go to new business. Give me one sec so I can scroll there. Okay, so at this time, there's a very special, tonight's a very special night. With us tonight, we have the Bottas family. As many of you know, and those watching from home, Joseph F. Bottas the second was a dear friend of this select board, of this town and this community. He served relentlessly and tirelessly for fifteen-plus years, dedicating much of his life and time, you know, to this town and our residents, and often at the sacrifice of his family. I can't tell you how much Joe has taught me, and I can't tell you how difficult it is to run one of these meetings. I used to watch Joe do this all the time, and I'd just show up and be ready to go and say, oh, that doesn't look too hard. And I remember the first time I had to run one of these meetings, I called Joe afterwards because he was going through his treatments, and I said, Joe, I got to tell you, man, I had a lot of respect for you before, but it just tripled because these meetings are very difficult to run. You're trying to shuffle all your screens. You know, as we all know, Joe and his family, as I said, just means so much to this community. And although Joe was staunchly against naming any piece of town-owned property after a person, and there's many reasons for that, and I understand the pros and cons, he'd probably be very upset with us for doing this. But we felt that it was our obligation to show the family and the residents a small, and this doesn't even come close to a token of appreciation that Joe meant to this town and this board. But we felt like we wanted to do something that he wouldn't be mad at us at, and we figured that we could get away with this without him being overly frustrated. So I want to just invite the board members, just to pay a quick, you know, couple of words for the family. You know, just about your dad, your husband, your family member, Joe, what an amazing man, as you all know he was, how important he was to this community. He's left a legacy that, you know, will always be remembered if I have anything to do about it. And I just can't thank you enough. I said this before and I'll say it again. The sacrifice that your family by letting Joe come and work with us, we're all indebted to you a great deal for those fifteen-plus years of missed events. You know, I go through it myself, but you know, missed events, missed, you know, bedtimes, missed this, missed that. So Kathy, the kids, everybody else, please know that we love you, and please know that this is, again, a fraction of what your husband, father, friend, family member deserves. But it's just a small token to let you know how much Joe meant to us. And with that, I'll turn it to my vice chair, Michelle.
So beautifully said, Chair Gallo. It's so nice to see Joe's family and friends here this evening. It certainly makes his presence even stronger. I think it was during our first meeting after we lost Joe that I said, someone mentioned to me, a person's not truly gone unless we stop saying their name or remembering them. Everywhere I go in town, if it's an event, if I meet someone on the sidewalk, Joe's name comes up. They talk about what an incredible man he is, a man of great faith, a man of great friendship, a man who loved this town and the people in it. So I feel this dedication is so fitting for his service, his love and friendship for our town and for all the residents that are here now and for those in the future. So Kathy, Emily, Anthony, Joe, know that your dad will always be remembered. We will always say his name. We miss our dear friend, Joe.
Well said. So when I was a young man there, Joe and I were in the town business, but we were both service managers at different Dodge dealerships, and I learned a lot from them then. And then fast forward to Rhythm, bumped into them. We were friends. We've always been friends. He taught me a lot. I miss him.
Thank you. Jimmy?
Well, so I've known Joe for a lot of years. I know him back when I was on the police department. And, you know, Joe and I would grab dinner at nights and talk about the future of the town. And Joe is one of the reasons why, when I retired, that I actually got into running for the Board of Selectmen. So Joe was an only huge mentor to me, as well as the other members of this board. But one thing I'll say about Joe is he loved the town of Rhythm, and he loved his family, and he would do anything for the town, for you guys. So thank you for sharing him with us for many years. Thank you.
Well said.
So as Michelle said, Joe was a man of faith, and we both went to the same church. Joe and his family sat in the same pew at the four o'clock mass for many a year. Got to see him and his family along with mine grow. The only reason I'm here is because of Joe Bottas asking me to consider running for selectman in his absence. And that was something I didn't want to do at first because we wanted to put every effort into him staying and fighting the good fight. But after he passed, I made that decision, but it was a tough one. So God bless all of you and God bless Joe.
Amen. Well said. I think let's officially dedicate this room from this moment in time until this building is no more, and then hopefully even beyond that, to the Joseph F. Bottas the second conference room. And I think that deserves a round of applause. Thank you. And thank you, Michelle, for pointing this out. I was just looking at that and I was reading it in my mind, just hearing his voice say this to me. How many times have we all heard Joe say, "That too, that too." How many times have we all heard Joe say, "Rhythm is not just a town, it's a family," right? Every conversation I had with him, you know, we have to find common ground on these issues because it's not just about us. Rhythm is not a town, it's a family. And we thought, how, you know, how much more fitting should the words that Joe said to us and ingrained in us and the way that we conduct ourselves as a board and as a town be on the wall so we can remind ourselves why we're here, right? So at this time, I'm going to officially ask the meeting to pause, and I'm going to invite the family to come up. You know, I don't know what protocol is. Do you want to take a picture in front of the? Okay, so we're going to pause the meeting, the recording, and we're going to have the family come up. I want to come up, give each of you a hug if that's okay, and please feel free to take a picture with us or just yourselves in front of that. A small tribute of our appreciation, Kathy and family. We're going to get back going. We got to, I know we have a packed agenda. Okay, to keep going? Are we back recording and everything, Amanda? Okay, at this time, you know, speaking about something near and dear to Joe Bottas' heart, Joe is a huge supporter of our public safety, big, big supporter of our public safety. And he would be very proud. Yeah, please come in, guys. Please come on in.
They're shy.
Don't be shy. He would be very proud of the job that was done. And let me back up. We're here to talk about the August eleventh incident at twenty-five Wolford Road. But as my good friend Chief Marino pointed out to me, you know, our men and women in red and blue hold themselves to a high standard every day. You know, for you, that might have been a routine event, but for us watching you excel and perform to the level that you did, exceeding all the expectations, we thought it was nothing less than just excellent and were so proud of you. So just to recap of what happened, in case, you know, someone watching doesn't know, on August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, there was a three-alarm fire at twenty-five Wolford Road owned by Lucille Nordiger, who was evacuated from the home by Sergeant Jonathan Colly Flores, Officer Mark Miscavige, and Officer Michael Flynn. Suppression of the fire incident was overseen by Deputy Chief Patrick McMorro and Deputy Chief John Donovan. Mutual aid, and this is another big thing that, you know, maybe one of the deputies or the chief himself might want to speak to at some point, but the mutual aid that I'm told was provided by the fallen towns was nothing short of phenomenal as well. And the coordination, how all these towns worked together, you know, just like a symphony, just to, it was a work of art. Mutual aid was provided by Norfolk, Franklin, Plainville, North Attaborough, Fellingham, Foxborough, Sharon, Norwood, Walpole, Medway, Mansfield, Millis, and Cumberland, Rhode Island. So in a small token of our appreciation, we wanted to, we thought it was a great idea to do certificates. And we have certificates accommodation for both police and fire. We had to stand that, although I'm staring at our very handsome police chief, Bill McGrath, some of the officers weren't able to make it. So we will be providing those certificates accommodation to them later on or at another time. But with us this evening, we'd like to recognize Deputy Chief John Donovan, Deputy Chief Patrick McMorro, I'm sorry, and then the rest of the fire department. We'd like you just to stand and let us recognize you quickly, and we're going to present you with an accommodation. So go ahead, don't be shy, boys. Mike, do you mind passing out the accommodations? And I do, you can take a seat, and I do want to get pictures with you guys before you leave, but let me just say this. The work done by these deputies and the work done by Colly Flores, Miscavige, and Flynn, that was exemplary work, but let me tell you why that work was exemplary. It's because we have two very great chiefs who put the time in to raise up the next generation of leaders who let those leaders excel and let them perform in situations where their skills are tested. And I think that's a testament to not only, you know, the community's faith in our, in our men and women in public safety, but it's also a testament to these two gentlemen standing in the back of the room. It's their knowledge, it's their wherewithal, it's their ability to find and keep good talent, to promote good talent from within, and to keep good talent here with us so that my kids and my kids' kids can be safe, knowing that we have this kind of legacy in the police and fire department. So I do want to congratulate the two chiefs and tell you that, although I joke around with you both a lot and we tend to bust each other's chops, I have nothing but respect for the two of you gentlemen. I think you do a fine job managing these departments, so. Let's take another quick pause and let's get a couple pictures with the fire department gentlemen that are here. Is that okay, Mike? Meeting is back in session. We're going to go to tab number five, which is an interview and appointment of Tatiana Denalova to the Economic Development Commission. Do we have Tatiana with us?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear us okay?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for inviting me.
No, thank you for coming. It's great to have you. So Tatiana, you've been recommended to us. You've actually applied. We're looking at your application now. It also came with a great recommendation from the Chair of the EDC, Rebecca Zinnimer. Typically, what we do, you know, in this setting is we just kind of ask you to give us a quick little summary about yourself, why you're interested in the position, and why you think you'd be a good fit. And I'm just going to go ahead and ask the question for the board, just in lieu of time. We've got a crazy meeting and we're already way behind. So first of all, we thank you for your interest in serving. How, you've been a Rhythm resident for four years over on Chestnut Street. How do you like living in Rhythm?
I love it. It's a wonderful town with a very strong community, so I would like to be a part of it even more and contribute from this perspective, supporting businesses.
It's great. So just expound on that a little bit. Tell us a little bit about yourself for the people that don't have your application in the packet and why you want to be. And uh why you want to be on the EDC? What, and what, what do you think you could bring to the table? And what would be some of your goals if elected or if appointed?
Well, I always thought that contributing to the society where you live in is a great thing to do. And I never knew what kind of ways I could use to do so. And when I saw the, the um, uh vacancy for the committee, I thought it's a good fit. Because I, my whole life I was dealing with small and mid-sized businesses. And I was supporting them as an accountant, as a tax preparer, as a bookkeeper at different stages of my profession. And I thought it's a great chance for me to see all aspects of uh the needs of small businesses. And economic development of a city, of a town overall. Much closer and contribute uh bringing my expertise, my experience and my education, so.
That's great. I'm gonna ask, any members of the board have any other questions for Tatiana? I'm not gonna go down the list, you just tell me if you have any questions and speak up.
No question.
If you do. Any questions, any comments? Tatiana, I think your application looks fantastic. I think you're more than qualified. Especially with the letter of recommendation from the Chair of the EDC. So at this time, Chair would obtain a motion um to appoint uh Tatiana Danalova. I'm sorry if I messed that up to the Economic Commission for a term effective immediately and expire on June 30th. Mo- motion made by Select Man Anderson, second by Select Woman Rouse. Any further discussion? Being none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Um Tatiana, the only thing you need to do is I need you to come see the Town Clerk's Office for your swearing in. And your ethics information at your earliest convenience.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
And welcome, welcome to the EDC. Thank you so much for serving. I look forward, the board looks forward to working with you again in the future.
Thank you so much. I'm honored. Thank you.
All right, have a great night.
You too.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to tab number six. This is interviews and appointments for the uh Elderly and Disabled Tax Aid Committee. Um, in our packet, we have uh applications from Gail Pratt, Stephen Levesque, Mary Dobek and Amelia Small. Do we have anyone here with us presently? Hi.
Aye.
Uh.
Stephen.
Stephen?
Mary Dobek.
And Mary Dobek, hi, how are you? Welcome. And do we have um Amelia? Is Amelia on?
She's on.
She's on remotely?
Yeah.
I'm here, I'm here on remote.
Hi, how are you tonight?
I'm well, how are you?
Fantastic. So um, wel- wel- welcome. And just to let everyone know, what we're gonna do is we're just gonna uh ask each of you to, you know, quickly state, you know, who you are. Why you're interested in this committee. Um, and we're gonna go ahead and, you know, move forward and see about appointing three. So we do actually have four applicants for three spots, so I do want to point that out. And we also have an unfortunate situation here with um Gail Pratt. Gail Pratt was supposed to be with us tonight. She called the office earlier. I guess she was under the weather, not feeling well. She was battling during the day, thinking she could still make it or call in. And then we had an update that she just really wasn't feeling herself. Um, so I would ask the board uh to, to, you know, look at her application as well. She's a two-term former select woman, um done, you know, a lot of other things with the town and community as well. Um, and I will say too, Mary, uh, Mary, ma- where's Mary? Mary in the back. Didn't, you look very familiar to me. Didn't I just appoint you to another? Position? Was it the Disability Commission? Okay. So it's great, it's great to see you. Congratulations on that. And thank you for your uh interest in this. Um, do we want to start uh Mary with you while I kind of have the spotlight on you? Just tell us a little bit about you. If you want to come closer, you can. You know, why you're interested in this position and kind of what you, you know, your background and why you think you'd be a good addition.
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt, uh, we're gonna ask her to invite you to come sit down.
Come sit down in front of.
Cable eight.
Oh, okay. Please come forward, right there in the hot, one of these hot seats right here. Yeah. It's just because it's mic'd for cable eight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, well, I have, of course, as mentioned, I've been on the Disability Commission. I've been in town for twenty-nine years. Uh, I have a son with, is, that is severely disabled, so I have a lot of experience in that area. Um, and elderly as well, so that counts. Um, I don't know really too much about the program, that the committee. Um, I didn't get a lot of information about it, but um, I'm here to help.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Uh, any of the board members have any questions? For Mary? Nope? Thank you for your interest in application. Appreciate that. Um, because Steve, I see Stephen in front of me. Stephen, do you mind coming up? This is Stephen Levesque. Stephen, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to be here with us this evening. Please tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in this uh appointment.
Well, my name's Stephen Levesque. Um, I am a long-term uh New Hampshire resident. Uh, in two thousand nineteen, I moved down here um to Rentham and um absolutely love it. Um, love all the people, I live in a little neighborhood on Carriage House Lane. And everybody is like family on that road. So that's, that's a neat thing. Um, I've got a lot of experience. Uh, I ran a uh company. Um, I worked there since nineteen eighty-three. And I owned it in two thousand and two. Uh, sold it in two thousand twenty, retired. Um. I woke up one day and I said, hey, I'm, I'm an older person now. And.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. But I, I did see uh you guys advertising for some people to, to head up this group.
Yep.
Uh, to be in it. And uh I thought, you know, I'd like to at least contribute something. I have a lot of experience dealing with people. I've had eighty employees. Um, so I, I've been traveling the whole world, so I've seen a lot of stuff.
Great. Well, thank you for your interest. I'm gonna ask the board members if they have any additional questions for Stephen. No, anyone? No? Well, thank you again for your interest. Yeah, please take a seat.
Thank you.
We'll be back with you in a moment. Amelia, are you still with us?
I sure am, from New Hampshire, actually.
Oh, wow. So two, two live.
I'm just, I'm up here on vacation and I just, this, yeah. So anyway, I just thought it was funny that he was from New Hampshire.
That's great. So Amelia, can you, uh, by the way, thanks for uh logging in while you're on vacation. Thanks for your interest in the community here. Tell us a little bit about. Like we asked the other people, what, what, what makes you interested in this uh appointment? What can you bring to the table and go right ahead?
All right. I have lived in Rentham for thirty-nine years. And I recently retired about a year and a half ago. After twenty-four years working at the elementary school as a special ed paraprofessional. And um, so I'm used to working bunch of different personalities every day. And uh, I just thought that it would be interesting to get involved in the town. And I thought that this would be a good way to do it. I am also now considered elderly, so um, I thought that uh it would be kind of a neat thing to try. So that's why I'm here.
Great. Thank you so much for your interest and thank you for putting yourself out there. Uh, now the board has some difficult decisions to make. We have, in my humble opinion, four very, very qualified, able and interested candidates for three positions. Um, what, you know, is there any thoughts from the board?
I think it's awesome that we have four people uh going for, for three positions. I was not at the meeting, I was absent, in which we went through a lot of the commissions and committees. In part, did we evaluate, because I know we want to get as much involvement as possible from different members in the community? Do we take a look at who's on other committees or commissions to see if we can give others a, an opportunity?
We do. That's something that we weigh when we're looking at this stuff, uh definitely. And that came up in that last meeting where we actually, you know, asked uh, you know, a- a- and, and kind of uh, you know, pleasantly encouraged. Um, one of the members not to be offended if we didn't go with them because they were so heavily involved on at least one of the other committees. So that is something that we should take into consideration, in my humble opinion, too.
Okay.
So I did mention, I know that Mary is uh on one of our, uh, you know, on the, on the disa- um.
Disability Commission is.
That's not accurate. Didn't we just appoint her?
Disappointed.
We just appointed you.
Right, and that's appointed me?
Yes.
Or not just now?
No, 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 not just now, literally two mu- two months ago.
To the Disability Commission.
To the Disability Commission in June. Well, what, well, congratulations. You're on the Disability Commission effective June. You could, you should definitely, someone must have, someone must have um. Uh, we can, we can follow up with you after this meeting. I can't get into it right, right now. Um, but I do remember, that's why I said I knew your name, because you were just appointed to the Disability Commission in June. Someone thinks very highly of you, Mary, and appointed you and that, and volunteered your name to that. So that does bring up an interesting point. Um, Mike King, our town manager, he's this handsome gentleman right here. He'll get with you tomorrow and try to figure this out and get you in touch with, i- i- if in fact that is the case. Get her in touch with the town clerk to make sure that if anything is needed from a swearing in perspective.
And even better, the town clerk felt that it's still open for another twenty minutes.
Oh, so we can actually do that tonight? Okay, um, so, you know, like I said, we do have a, a resident, a ve- very, very, you know, uh, four very committed and able people.
Um. I do not believe that Stoback was appointed to the Disability Commission.
Someone, well, that's the information I was given.
I don't see your database.
The application says Disability Commission.
Okay.
So you, you were previously on the Disability Commission?
Yes, I didn't know that it, it had to be, it had to evolve, so I, I didn't know this was, it's not exist.
I will, I will follow.
Yeah, but I don't even have Mary's name in the database anywhere.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
Okay, well, that's interesting. Okay, well.
If I may.
You may. And before you interject, I, I want to say apologies. We can only go on the information that we're given, so I apologize uh if we misspoke. But your name did sound very familiar and at least one of the other members of my team agreed with me. When I said I feel like we just had her on one of our last meetings, so we do apologize for that. But Select Manessin, I appreciate any of that.
Is this, is this one of the committees where we could have an associate?
Uh, the dialogue is not allowed for an associate, although we can look at that for the next fall time.
I would say, uh, what's the will of the board? We need three, we, we need a motion for three candidates. We have four applicants. All very, you know, uh, willing, able and.
So, so, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, although I, I've known Gail Pratt for many years.
As a value.
Well-respected in town, but I think the fact that she was unable to make it tonight. And we do have three candidates that, that are here. Um, I just feel as if we should probably trend in that direction for the candidates, at least we're willing to, to able to show up.
Right. The only problem I have with that, Select Manessin, is that uh, and I, I used this analogy at the last meeting. She's not at the, at the gavel having beers. She's, she's sick. She's not able to be here. You know, and it's not that she didn't want to come, it's that she physically couldn't. So I think we do have to at least consider that though as well, although you do make a very fair point.
So, Mr. Chair, there's only two people on the commission of disability. And if you would want to consider that, an application, we could address that at another time. And have, how many members are required with the Commission of Disability? Is the commission?
There's open, there's openings on the website on the volunteer applications, we speak.
Yeah. So that, that, that's a potential consideration.
May I ask what would be other people in the Thomas?
Jane O'Field and Rebecca Zinnimer. Zinnimer, excuse me.
Zinnimer. Yeah, she's also the head of the EDC. Thoughts on that, Mary?
If, if there's a commission act, we certainly need, want to be involved in that as well.
Okay, and would you be willing to serve in that can, uh, uh, on that commission and potentially be okay if we didn't put you on this commission?
Our goal is to get as many people involved as possible.
Yeah, that's the goal that we're, so we have a big push with engagement, right?
We don't want to exclude anyone.
Right.
And we're thrilled that you, you know, participated on that committee and be on the Disability Committee again. Um, if there's that interest and then have the other three people who are interested in this committee. So everyone can, it's a win-win if, if you're, if, if you're interested.
With an active disability commission is impacted.
Yeah, we, we have new appointments to be established. Um, so it actually would be great if you would be willing.
She could, she could, I mean, she's been, she's experienced in that position already, so it'd be, I think it'd be a big help to that commission.
Especially with new members not having that institutional knowledge that you clearly have.
If you'd be willing to do that, we'd appreciate it, but of course, that, we live in the best country in the world, in the freest country. So we're not pushing you in a certain way, we're asking if you'd consider, but thank you very much. That means a lot to us, Mary. Thank you. Okay, well, that makes our job a whole lot easier than Select Manessin.
It does.
So I think you want, we're gonna make a couple of motions if I was mistaken.
I was.
Go ahead.
Yes. So I will make the first motion. All right, I'll make for um, you see, with Stephen Levesque. To be on the um, committee.
And the, well, the, the thing we have to do too is we have uh, we have to establish the terms, right, Mike?
That is correct.
So the, the most fair way I think we could do this is kind of use the, who, whoever brought the, whoever responded first with the application. Should get the three-year term. Second person should get the two-year term, and then the, the last person should get the one-year term.
I can provide those names right now.
Would you?
Uh, so if we were following in that order, the three-year term would be for Amelia Small.
Okay.
The two-year term for Mr. Levesque.
Okay.
And the one-year term for Gail Pratt.
Okay, Mr. Uh, Anderson, would you like to amend your motion then?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Uh, make a motion to appoint Gail Pratt to the Elderly and Disabled Tax Aid Committee for a term effective immediately, expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Um, any further, do you want us to do all or just do?
You have to do.
Okay, any further discussion? So there was a motion made by Select Man Anderson, second by Select Man Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Second motion?
Yeah. Uh, motion to appoint Stephen Levesque to the Elderly and Disabled Tax Aid Committee for a term effective immediately, expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second, made, motion made by Select Man Anderson, second by Select Man Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, motion to appoint Amelia Small to the Elderly and Disabled Tax Aid Committee for a term effective immediately, expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion made by Select Man Anderson, second by Select Man Harrington. Any further discussion? Being none? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Uh, we would ask, congratulations to all. We would ask that you, all personnel serving on all standing committees shall be appointed to three-year terms on a staggering and arranged basement. We just did that. And all appointees should see the town clerk's office for swearing in and ethics information at their earliest convenience. All right, and I do want to just give another thank you to Mary for being uh, uh, an incredible team player. Um, you'll be hearing from Mike King or, and/or Amanda tomorrow about the Disability Commission. And again, I can't thank you enough for, for you, you're utilizing your experience and helping us get that revitalized. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you for everyone for showing your interest.
Thank you.
All right, okay, as we move on. We're gonna move on to. We're gonna move on to tab number seven. Uh, with tab number seven, we've got another exciting uh presentation uh this evening. With us, we have an Eagle Scout presentation from Matthew Monte. And in attendance, we have Matthew Monte, and it looks like uh he's accompanied by uh, uh Cemetery Manager Ann Treewood and Ray Rose. Uh, I guess Brian Antonoli couldn't be here. So Matthew, would you please come forward, sit down with us up here and give us a, a, a summary of what your Eagle Scout project's all about? And thank you for being here with us.
Thank you for having me here. So, good evening. My name is Matthew Monte. I'm a rising senior at King Philip High School. I'm also a life scout from Troop Sixty-One. Today, I will be presenting with my Eagle Scout service project, which I plan to lead and complete with the help of fellow scouts and volunteers. For my Eagle project, I will be raising and cleaning a hundred veteran memorial stones in the main cemetery at the center of town. To preserve the history and honor those who are buried there. Many of the stones in the cemetery have fallen well below grade, as you can see in the before pictures, which I think I provided before. Um. My project will involve the removal of such stones and re-leveling of the stones using stone dust and lube. Following the raising of each stone, a thorough brushing of the stone will be done to ensure its visibility. Overall, the goal of the project is to enhance the cemetery grounds and provide a lasting service to the community. I have already received approval from, obviously, Ray Rose and the Boy Scout Mayflower Council to complete this project. To prepare, I completed a trial run. This helped me test the process, identify the tools and materials that work best and estimate how much time it would take to complete each stone. The trials showed me that the project is very manageable and gave me a clear idea of what needs to be done. As you can see in, in the photos, it made a large difference in the visibility of the stones. Because of this trial, I feel confident that the actual project will go very smoothly. As project leader, my main responsibility will be organizing the volunteers, making sure everyone knows their role. I will emphasize safety, patience, and since this project requires careful, precise work. My role will be to oversee progress, solve problems if they arise, ensure works completed at a high standard. My role will be to oversee progress, solve problems if they arise, ensure works completed at a high standard. In conclusion, my project will restore the veteran footstones to their original height and properly honor those who served. With the approval, Mr. Rose, your approval tonight, and the lessons I've learned from my trial run, I am ready to lead this project and make a lasting impact on my community. Thank you. You guys have any questions?
I, I just want to say, uh, before I open it to the board, we, we really appreciate this project. Um, as you may or may not know, this board, this town, we hold our veterans near and dear to our hearts. I, I looked at the, the, the pictures and the before and after on your test run was absolutely incredible. Um, I'm proud, uh, of you, I'm proud that you're doing this, and I'm, well, you know, this, this community is so proud of the brave men and women who fight for our freedoms. So this means a lot to this board and the town, so I commend you for such an incredible project, um, and I commend you on being an Eagle Scout, you know? Uh, it's one of those things, it's, you know, it's the highest, it's the, it, you know, it's the highest position you could be as a boy scout. And, um, I, you know, I know there's a lot of great Eagle Scouts out there that have went on to do amazing things in our communities. So you're on a trajectory with some very impressive people, and I just again want to commend you on this project, I fully support it. And I know Ray Rose, you know, Ray's a veteran himself, uh, and just a wonderful man and, and member of our community. And I know he will give you whatever assistance he and, and our director of the DPW, Brian Antonoli, can to make sure that this project's successful. Um, at this time, I open it up to any of the other board members that might have anything to add.
I just want to say it's an awesome project, and we've had a lot of Eagle Scouts have come through with different projects. And, um, I'll tell you, I couldn't be more proud of what you guys have done for this community, so I thank you again. And, uh, it, just one quick question, is there a, a cost factor to this?
Um, Ray, Ray is providing the stone dust and the lube.
Okay, yeah, I saw something about five hundred bucks in the application, right, was that a?
That's, that's like the estimated amount, but Ray said the town will provide such materials.
Good, I'm glad we can help.
Well, good luck. Congratulations on getting to the step of being an Eagle Scout. Thank you for taking care of our local heroes and their recognition.
Any other, uh, any other comments before we go to the motion? No? Alright, yeah, I think you can add a support for the board, so, uh, at this time, Chair would entertain a motion to, uh, endorse Matthew Monte's Eagle Scout project. At the Rantham Cemetery. Motion made by everybody and seconded by everybody, but I have to pick, Anderson made the motion, selectwoman Ralph second. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Congratulations, we can't wait to see the finished product.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, moving right along, we apologize, uh, for such a long meeting.
See you, Ray.
Bye, Ray, good to see you. Uh, looks like this tab number eight is a gift acceptance, um. As many people may, may not know, um, we had a menorah, uh, for the first time on the town common, uh, last year. Um, a group of residents got together, um, and did a fundraiser and raised the money, uh, to purchase the menorah. Um, and, uh, you know, as part of the agreement, uh, with the town was that, uh, they had raised the money and purchased it. They were dedicated to the town and then the town would be responsible for putting it up every year, taking it down and storing it, if I'm, if I'm correct, Mike. Um, you know, so we just want to say, uh, thank you for the residents that came together to do that. Uh, you know, uh, uh, we shouldn't have to say this, but I'm gonna say this, um, we, we love our Jewish brothers and sisters. We stand firm with our Jewish brothers and sisters, uh, and people of any faith. Uh, so we're just so blessed that Rantham is a, a welcoming community, uh, you know, that, uh, that, uh, you know, respects people, their religious beliefs. And I think this is just an amazing thing for the town and the community. I know it was very well received by everyone, not just the Jewish population. So I'm honored that this select board, uh, was a part of the first menorah lighting and will be a part of many more menorah lightings to come, um, in the subsequent years. So at this time, uh, Chair would entertain a motion to accept a menorah valued at two thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars donated by residents of Rantham. Um, and neighboring towns in support of Rantham's strong and vibrant Jewish community. So, motion made by everyone, I'm gonna say selectman Harrington, second by selectman Lamoff. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Excellent job, I'm proud of that as well. Uh, okay, uh, now that we've done that, it looks like tab number nine is gonna be, uh, should be relatively quick. Um, it looks like we have a vote to approve a class-two dealer license application for Rantham Auto. Um, that is located at eleven ninety-eight West Street, I believe that's the one that's on the corner of Weston Arnold, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, attendees, do we have Joviny Edward? It looks like he's on Zoom.
Yes.
Hey, how are you doing tonight?
I'm good, and yourself?
Great, uh, so, uh, please, uh, welcome to our meeting, we understand, uh, we have you on here this evening. Uh, we have a vote to approve a class-two dealer license, um, for your auto, uh, business located at eleven ninety, eleven ninety-eight West Street. Um, do you want to just give us a quick, uh, understanding of what we're trying to accomplish here and how this board could hopefully help you?
Yeah, so, um, I just think it's a great community, I'm making a move over from Patakeet, uh, Rhode Island. And, uh, it's just a good community, we're just looking to do, uh, auto sales out of right now. And, uh, maybe looking in the future to do even services as well, to get the service license as well, but I think it already currently does have a service license. But, um, yeah, so we're looking to do just auto sales out of right now.
Okay, and if I'm reading the application correctly, uh, Mike, it, it looks like, you know, th- this application, like all of our applications, run the normal course. We've checked with all the necessary, uh, you know, uh, people at town to make sure that the applicant's done his due diligence. You know, taxes are paid, you know, licenses are up to date, uh, everything from that perspective is all set.
So we've checked with the, uh, building commissioner about the zoning as well.
Right, so that, that is one thing I did want to talk about, uh, it says here that the applicant has requested a license for twelve vehicles. However, per the building commissioner, the site is a, is a pre-existing non-conforming site, which many of them are. And number of vehicles to be located on the property may not be increased above the current number of nine. Were you, were you aware of that, Mr. Edward?
No, so the question just asked me like an estimate of how many, uh, I would expect to be on the lot, so that was just a, an estimate I gave.
Okay, so I guess where, where, uh, unfortunately, we have to limit the amount of vehicles to nine. Based on the fact of the lot size, uh, and if you wanted more than nine. My understanding is you'd have to go in front of the zoning board of appeals, if I'm not mistaken, um, to ask for the twelve. So this board tonight has the authority and the power to grant your license for nine, if you would, uh, be willing to accept that.
Yes, that's not a problem.
Okay, great, so, uh, does any, any of my fellow board members have any other questions or comments before we move to motion? No, okay, at this time, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the class-two license application as presented. For Rantham Auto LLC located at eleven ninety-eight West Street and shall not exceed nine vehicles on the property.
So.
Motion made by selectman Anderson is our second.
Second.
Second by selectwoman Ralph, any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, aye. Any opposed? Now, motion carries five zero, uh, Mr. Edward. So congratulations. What does he have to do at this point, Mike, anything?
Amanda will provide him the license.
Amanda will provide, Amanda in our office will provide you with the license, sir. Congratulations, and, uh, I hope you know this, this board and this town. Um, you know, we really try to help our small businesses out, so, uh, we wish you the best of luck and please continue to keep our board updated. As how things are going, if there's anything else we can do to help you.
I appreciate that, thank you, I look forward to the Rantham Day, uh, for the vendors next month.
Alright, we'll see you there.
Thank you.
Great night, okay, moving on, uh, and we're so sorry to keep you two gentlemen waiting, tab ten. We were very fortunate to have with us, uh, we're gonna get an update on the Rantham School Committee, uh, from, from the Rantham School Committee Chair, Phil Jordan. First, on, uh, collective bargaining agreement, um, and we also have with us our superintendent Alan Cameron, Dr. Cameron. So gentlemen, I apologize, please come forward, I apologize that you were a little bit lower in the, uh, uh, in the order. I know you're both very busy and, you know, very blessed to have both of you with us this evening. Yeah, but it was, it's, it was a great meeting, typically not this, this awesome, um, but just an honor to have you both. And we'd love an update, uh, on how everything's going with the, the bargaining with teachers union.
Sure, well, thank you for inviting us here tonight, and, um, we're always happy to speak in front of an empty room, so. You can always put us left.
Yeah.
You can always put us left. Um, but, uh, thank you for the opportunity to give you a couple of different updates tonight, so first we want to update you on the collective bargaining, um, with, uh. So we're, we're in negotiations with three, uh, all three of the unions at the, at the, uh, Rantham Elementary Schools, so we have. Um, Unit A of the Teachers Association, which are all the teachers and educators, so, uh, classroom teachers, special educators. Um, uh, specials teachers, um, school psychologists, nurses, et cetera. And then Unit B, which is the paraprofessionals, um, the, uh, autism, uh, behavior, um. Um, support and the personal care assistants, and then also the steelworkers union, which represents the custodial staff. We began negotiations with Units A and B of the Rantham Educators Association in the spring. Um, we negotiated up through June, um, I think we made some good progress. Um, and we were hoping to continue to negotiate through the summer, um, but the unions were, uh, were not willing to continue to negotiate. Wanted to pause for the summer, uh, and come back in September, so our next negotiation session is September fourth. Um, we do, we are negotiating separately and together, meaning that the proposals are separate and we sort of, um. Spend the first part of the meeting talking about one unit, and then the next part of the meeting talking about another unit, but everybody's in the same room and the negotiating teams are the same. So the negotiating, negotiating teams for the school committee are myself and Veronica Gonzalez. Uh, and Dr. Cameron is there, and then the district's council, I joins us as well. And then there are fifteen members of, uh, the WEA, uh, and WEB units that are part of that negotiation team. Um, and all of our negotiations are live, live streamed and recorded and all available on the website. Um, so where we left off, uh, with Unit A and Unit B, um, is, uh, uh, the committee's offer. Which was, uh, rejected, but we're awaiting a counter in September. Uh, so we offered, um, uh, cost of living increases for Unit A, which is the teachers. Of, uh, three percent in year one, two percent in year two, and two and a half percent in year three, so a seven and a half percent over three years. Um, this would be in addition to what we call step and lane increases. So except for those teachers who are in the, the, after fifteen years of, of service. Um, they also would get a, a year, which is typically anywhere from three to five percent of additional sort of rates for, for the extra year of service. Uh, and, um, we came with it to that number, if we, if we look at those in sort of comparison to what we're seeing around other districts. Um, most of the negotiations that we're seeing coming in are between six percent and ten percent. Um, uh, and, you know, probably the most common is around, uh, eight to nine percent, that's where, where everything's clustering.
Three years?
For three years, um, and, um. We also think it's important to note that our, we call it the grid, right, the salary grid that shows where you are based on your education credits. And your years of service, our grid is, um, quite favorably comparable to other surrounding districts. So within those negotiations, actually, to not have us at or near the top, there were some perhaps districts that maybe would not be direct comparisons. Like Dover Sherborne and Sharon, um, but, so we're, we're sort of at or near the top in our grid, which is good. And it's part of the reason why we have teachers who stay for a long time, we respect our teachers, they do a great job. Um, but we also felt that that was important context for how we would allocate the resources across both units and the steelworkers for increases. We did give, um, much larger percentage increase to the Unit B offer, and that's the paraprofessionals. Um, there we did see that our grid was comparable to some districts in the area and well below other districts. And so we wanted to make sure that, you know, as their jobs get more difficult, as inflation takes a bigger bite, and because they're, you know, are lower wage. In comparison to other, uh, positions around the district, um, we gave much more generous, uh, offer for them. We actually provided a, a, a fifteen percent, two and a half percent, five percent for twenty-two and a half percent, uh, total. Over three years, um, uh, again, that is, um, that brings us up into much, much more, um. Favorable grid, um, it would put us, you know, higher than some of the other grids in the area like, um, Norfolk and, uh, KP. We would still be a little bit below Foxborough, um, over the three years, but I will note that fifteen percent would be the highest one-year increase of any negotiation in the last year. Um, and twenty-two and a half percent is not the highest, but it's certainly a generous offer. Um, in addition to those percentage increases, um, which we feel provide, you know, really competitive salaries, uh, and maintain our competitiveness. We also, um, uh, consistent with the trend across, uh, the Commonwealth with these negotiations, for the first time, offering paid parental leave. Uh, so starting in the second year of the contract for both units, five weeks of paid parental leave. Um, and so, um, that was a, a very important priority, five weeks is generous. Um, it's a little bit actually less than most private sector employees would get, um, but most districts are phasing in. Um, maybe, you know, starting at two and ending at four, or five, or six over, um, but five is, is, I would say generous. Um, and then there are a few other sort of minor, um, agreed-to changes, but that's basically, um. The, the updated where we are, you know, I think it's fair to say that we're, we're, you know, disappointed that it wasn't accepted, I think in any negotiation, that's sort of fair to say. It's not, uh, uh, I think there's still, um, we're still bargaining in good faith, I think there's, um, some good opportunity to continue talking. Um, though I feel as though we have extended, um, pretty close to the limit of what we can afford. Um, we've been incredibly transparent in terms of what this means for the budget and what the budget numbers are, so we've tried to share with them. You know, this is a reasonable expectation of what we think, the town, you know, has been very generous, these are the things that we're allocating these resources towards. And we are seeing increased needs, um, we certainly could use resources for additional support for special education. We could use additional, uh, paraprofessional, uh, and other supports, I can maybe, Alan, if you want to talk about some of the additional needs that we have. Um, and the committee, um, was very clear in our, in our goal-setting session last week in our meeting and in our discussions at our, in our meeting last week. That, um, before we could really consider more generous, uh, uh, compensation. We really have some needs that need to be addressed and we have to focus on funding that goes to direct student services, so. Um, it's a bit, you know, it's a tough navigation, you're trying to make people feel as though we're, you know, obviously we want to demonstrate that we respect the, the work that they do. And that they feel taken care of for the work that they do, but also there are increasing needs and, as you all know, you deal with all the time. You have many people like us coming in asking for money, you, you have a tougher job than we do in that regard. Uh, so, um, I think that's the update, I don't know if you want to add anything about.
I know, I mean, just to, to Phil's point, um, first of all, thank you for inviting us in to talk about this, um, and for your support. I think that really one of the key takeaways and something that we've talked about in the sessions is how we feel we've got great partners, um, on the town side. And, uh, you've been very supportive of the district, and it's been, it's been great, um, over the years, and I, I really appreciate that, um, and just. One of the reasons why the district is doing so well is because we offer, um. A range of supports for students so we can meet them where they are and provide them with targeted assistance, whether that's through. Uh, general education with like regular classroom teacher or, uh, literacy or math specialists, or through special education. Um, and what we've noticed is that we've had students, uh, coming in who have increasingly significant needs. Um, in both general education and special education, and, um, to meet those needs, we need to maintain this level of staffing that we have. Um, and many districts have installed that level of support for, uh, students through one-time money during COVID. Um, which we did as well, but we were able to kind of build it into the budget over time. Um, if we lost some of those positions, it would be detrimental to the students, so, um, and coupling that with, you know, having more students, more significant needs. So, um, it is challenging to, to maintain that, um, and that's been, you know, really our balancing is still saying. Showing, you know, making sure we have competitive wages for teachers and support staff members, while also. Building a budget that can be sustainable for the town and allow for us to continue to provide those, uh, supports.
One of the, um, you know, one of the challenges and, and part of the reason why, you know, the, the WAB, the, the paraprofessional. Increase that we suggested is, um, you know, the, the actual dollar ranges that are paid there are act, are actually fairly comparable to. They're not significantly over minimum wage and they're comparable to other, we're, we're now not only worried about losing people to other towns that might be paying more. But even jobs in retail and other sorts of industries, where, you know, somebody may not have to deal with some of the things that the powers are dealing with. Um, so part of it is also a recruitment issue, right, that we have.
And retention.
And retention, uh, and then the last thing that I definitely want to express to all of you is that it was very clear in our meeting and unanimous across all members of our board. Um, is, you know, the, the appreciation of, uh, the support that the town has given to the schools. Um, and a, a real need for, for us to express to all of you in this transparency. That, you know, we're putting all the numbers out on the table, we're here tonight really to answer any questions you have and let you know where we are on things. Um, and that we really feel it's important that, um, when we tell you that we have a need, it's real. And it's understood and that, you know, we're not just. When we tell you that we have a need, it's real and it's understood and that, you know, we're not just trying to, you know, make a negotiation easy. By, you know, just, just throwing money at it, right? So that's very, very important to the board, to everyone on the board or the school committee. So. Thank you for, for the assistance you've given us over, over the years and the support that we've gotten. Including not just our budget, but also warrant items that are needs for the school that, you know, we don't ask for things we think that are set over the top. And those things that we ask for, we generally are able to, to get, whether they be dishwashers, safety, uh, safety film and, and equipment. The air handlers for the gym, things that would be really challenging if we had to lay off teachers to put an air handler in, that would be really detrimental. So we really appreciate that and we want to be very transparent and open with you about where we are in the process. So. We will be posting, we've been working on it for a while, but our next update is actually about the school building and we've had a lot of moving parts with that. So we are going to be posting. Very soon, I hope, this week.
It'll be this week.
A bulletin update after every meeting, following every meeting that will be updating folks on the, on the, on the ongoing. Items around the school committee and one of the big areas of, of update will be providing lots of information to the public on the status of the negotiations. What the grids look like, what the proposed grids look like. You know, it's all public information and we think the more information that's out in the community, the better. So we will make sure that you all get a link to that when it's posted. Should be very soon.
Yeah, so I appreciate, we appreciate you coming in. I'm going to open it up to the board members in a minute to see if they have any follow-up questions or comments. I, I, I just want to say. We respect and appreciate the work that you both in the school committee is doing. We know firsthand that these negotiations are not easy. We understand that everyone is doing what they feel like is best, right? You know, the, the, the teachers' union is doing what they think is best for their client. You know, school committee is trying to do what's best for the town and the school and the, the budget. So we understand it's a balance and act and, and, and we know firsthand how difficult these decisions and these negotiations can be. You know, I will say that I have been following a lot of these negotiations, both watching some of them. Post, I, I'm not able to go live, but watching some of them after the fact. And, you know, trying to get updates through Mike, through Dr. Cameron, yourself, Bill. You know, and, and I will say that in my humble opinion, you know, I, I think we are negotiating in as good faith as possible. You know, I'm definitely concerned. I have some concerns, you know, on the other side. I'm very disappointed that they decided that they needed the summer off. You know, I, I don't know about you guys, but I don't get paid to be here. And I don't think you do either. So the fact that, you know, the, the message was we need a break on the summer, that was a little disheartening to me. Because if I'm not mistaken, the main priority is we're here for the kids. Right? The other thing that's a little bit concerning to me was the, um, this notion that I'm hearing about, just ask the town for more money via free cash. I think we've instructed our town manager, Mike King, to have a municipal finance one-on-one class. With anyone from the union or the school committee that needs it. Free cash is not something that we can just dip into anytime that there's a request. That's just not how finance works, right? And I also, in, in, you know, in, in just knowing how important the schools are to the, and let me back up. This board and this town have a history of honoring our schools, honoring our teachers, you know. Partnering, making sure that we can give the best possible compensation packages out there. You know, I don't even have kids in the district, but I'm, I'm, I mean, you can ask Dr. Cameron off camera if I'm not this passionate about the schools. And, and I am. Because I believe that strong schools equals strong town equals strong leaders equals, I mean, not to mention great property values as well. Right? So let's not be naive about that. But the fact is, is this board and this town have a history of partnering with you, just like we're doing now. So there's definitely some concerns from my perspective. It, you know, in my humble opinion and doing a little bit of my own research, I feel like we're very fairly compensating our teachers. I feel like we have a high percentage of our teachers on ten-year that have been with us for a while. That means a couple of things. They're happy. We provide a good place to live and work, you know, and they're being compensated fairly. And if I'm not mistaken, I mean, we have a good amount of teachers making over six figures a year, something like forty percent.
It's about forty percent.
Of the staff. I mean, that's, you know, that's significant. And, and, and then just another point that you made earlier that I can't stress enough. I say this with all due respect, you can't compare Rentham to Dover. Right? We're too separate. Like when I asked Mike.
Years ago as well. And so I can speak to that one and I think it's consistent with what I've seen before is that. The percentages are pretty much the same. But as you know, if you're making a hundred thousand dollars a year and you get a three percent increase, that's very different than if you're making nineteen dollars an hour and you get a three percent increase. And if you compound that over thirty years of negotiations, you end up seeing very small increases on the parallel compared to the teacher line. So I think, I think there's just different ways of viewing fairness. And so. In many ways, the way that we're handling negotiation is we're saying, okay, here's the pot of money. We're telling you what we've allocated. And we have been clear, especially I would say in the last four or five negotiations, that. The committee is not going to ask for more money because that is not. If we were, if we were going to ask for more money, it's because there's a massive need in the school that is going to directly benefit kids. And then I don't think we'd get it any pay because we've been given a generous amount of money, more than other districts, we've, or more than other departments. And we've said. The money that would come to us that we would ask for if we wanted more is going to come out of fires, going to come out of police, it's going to come out of roads, it's going to come out of. Where is it going to come from? It's got to come from somewhere else. And we got more than anybody else. And we're putting a lot of that money into this negotiation. And so we've been very clear that there is not, we, we do not believe that there's an appetite for more money and the committee is not asking for more money. And so I, I mentioned that to both of you and I will say it to all of you and say it to everyone watching at home, right? We are not, that, that is not a direction that we think is, is viable. Because we understand from talking with Mike about all the different things that you have to focus on in terms of funding and also. We're grateful for what we got and we're going to make it work.
And I just want to make one more point and then I'll be quiet, but I do think it's important to note, and I, I know you guys know this, but maybe the people at home don't. You know, the, the, Mike, the rough percentage of every, of every, you know. Of every dollar of taxpayer revenue that we collect, roughly, how much of that goes to the schools?
Well over fifty percent of your lumping in K P is as well in our tri-county and all of our education, but you know, majority of the pie is going towards education.
And don't we pay additionally, we pay health insurance on top of that?
Yeah. So when you're looking at the local school budget in particular. So those accommodated fixed costs, they aren't carried within the school budget. Those are carried within our employee benefits line. So your health insurance. As well as your retirement. And I'll, and I'll just add, just to, you know, also create a picture that the school committee chair places as well. You know, the, the select board has been supporting a record investment in local Rentham schools. And I'll point in particular, this year for FY twenty-six, the select board put forward a budget of four point four percent increase. Which is the largest increase in rental local elementary schools in over a decade.
So I mean, again, that just shows you our commitment to you guys in the school.
And we have made that, we have made that statement in the negotiations and in our meetings. It, it is, it is definitely appreciated and understood and we have made that point that, you know, that is. A, a big investment. I, I, I shared your, your concern about the idea that there is a pot of money somewhere that could be identified. Or trying to use free cash to balance the budget. And, you know, we also in our, in our next tab. We have some other, other expenses that are going to be coming down the line that we need to, to focus on. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's a challenge to, to navigate. And I, I, I think to your point, there are different ways of looking at fairness. And in our approach, we said, this is how much money there is. We are very transparent with how much money we set aside. We think it's fair to do fifteen percent for the pairs and three percent for the teachers in year one because of this discrepancy of the funding. But if you all get together and decide, no, we want the allocation to be different. As long as we stay in that dollar amount, we're totally flexible and, and that's why we approached it that way. It's hard then when the, when the answer is, oh, we need more into that pot because there isn't anymore. There's nowhere to take it from because we also. The committee is not willing to increase class sizes and decrease student support to make, you know, when we think we already have a generous offer on the table.
Which again is another, another really strong point. I think our classroom sizes are much smaller. Yeah. Again, I'll, I'm going to be quiet now. Any of the other board members want to speak up and I'll start with my vice chair.
Thank you. I've, I've been watching the streaming of the, the meetings, which has been very helpful for those people that have not, I think it's. It's good to hear what, what does it mean when you start a school year without a, a contract?
So what it means for the budget is that you essentially extend the pay. Of the prior year. So if you're at the top level, there would be no change to what you were paid. You still have your step and lane increases. So if you completed a degree or credit work or if you, you know. Moved another lane down for your, you would get that increase, but there would be no cost of living adjustment made. When that happens. Generally, and then all other aspects of the contract just sort of continue while you're negotiating. There are usually some things that happen then that are sort of negotiating tactics, but they tend to happen where. Both sides get a little bit more strict about the words that are in the contract. So things that maybe. Teachers would do or administrators would do for one another as courtesy start to sort of go by the wayside. They call it working to rule. So if the, if it says you're there at eight and a student needs help at seven forty. You, you would say until we get a contract in place, I'm not putting those after twenty minutes in. Now, to be honest, not every teacher does that, right? But that's sort of what. Usually, yeah, that, or if the workday goes until three fifteen and you're in the parking lot at three ten, then we can dock five minutes of pay, right? Something along those lines. So you start getting those things that happen. If we are not able to. Continue to negotiate. If we reach, you know, the, if we just are too far apart to get to a number. We go to what's called impasse and then usually the next step in that process is mediation. And all that really means is that we sit, we don't sit together. We sit in one room, they sit in another room and somebody fares, fares back and forth and says. They're upset with you about this and then you're upset with them about that and you, you get some help trying to get to an answer, but it's not binding. Let's hope, I don't, you know, let's hope we're not going there or anywhere further than that, but I don't know if you have anything.
No, no, I. I'm kind, I'm hopeful that we will, we have four meetings scheduled and I'm hopeful that we'll. Wrap this up before we get to October.
Does unit B have steps and lanes as well or they just get their, their cost of living?
They do, but there's only four, I think. Is that right?
Yes.
Four, yeah.
Four steps, no lanes.
The paid parental leave that you mentioned, that was brought to you by the teachers association in terms of a need that they wanted.
Yeah, so pretty much every negotiation that's happening now, that's a, that's an ask. Usually the, the asks are for six to twelve weeks. And. Many of the teachers are using sick time. And then running out, you know, cobbling things together with sick time. And then the challenge that they face is that now they have a newborn. The newborn gets sick and they have no sick days. So from, from a cost perspective, there certainly is a cost, right? Because we have to replace, but in reality. If you have a sick child and you're not in sick time, you're either getting sick bank or you're taking a day without pay and it's not that big of a financial. Hit on a one-time basis. I mean, giving five weeks is, you know, will have a cost for sure, but it's, yeah.
And, and how many teachers does that impact like per year?
It varies by year. Usually it's, you know, two or three up to maybe even five.
And, and they rejected your first year pass and then affected the second and third year?
So that's an interesting point. So we, the first offer that we made had five weeks in each year. But we also had a lane change that they found very objectionable. And the way that we were able to meet there, so basically. There was no definition in the prior contract around a, a sort of certificate of advanced graduate study. Which is usually something that someone has well after a master's degree and is thirty to forty credits and. You know, the school psychologists do it for a year after getting two years of master's program. And there's an online program that is like twelve credits or something or, I, I don't want to disparage it. It's approved. There's nothing you can do about it. But people were able to jump lanes and it was very expensive. So we wanted to kill that off. Which they agreed to, but they wanted people who just completed it to get, to get in there and we just wanted them to get the credits. They were very upset about that move. So we said, okay, that's fair. We understand you were told. And at the time that you paid for your program, you believed that you would be getting in this and if you had asked us, we would have said, yes, that's, that's true. But the only way we can pay for it, because we don't have extra money lying around, is to delay one year of that paid parental leave. So they were upset about that. They rejected, we gave them an entire package because he said, you can't accept things piecemeal, right? Like. This is a perfect example. If you don't like our lane fix that saves us fifty thousand dollars. Then we can't give you fifty thousand dollars worth of paid parental leave in the first year because we don't have it. So you have to accept it as a package or not. And so basically what they said was, we reject your package as is. But that was really just to say, we're going to give you a counter to your package. In September.
And that, and that's where we're going to start. And I'm still hopeful, you know, we're starting the year off. It's always a great time of year. Everybody feels tense in June. It's really, it's like landing a plane. It's coming in. For a crash landing, it's a lot happening, but with the summertime recharge, the relationships that we've had, I mean, they, you know, it's. I think this is, this is, this is a glitch. This is not a catastrophic. Issue. I think that we're going to be able to kind of work through it. I'm hopeful they're going to come in. Give an offer to the school committee that will be a reasonable counter to what you have proposed and we'll be able to kind of start from there. And that's what I'm hoping.
And I just, I'm sorry, one more question, just to follow up on the, the parental leave. Mike, can you educate me? Town hall, district departments, or that, is that offered?
So on the town side, we do not currently offer paid parental leave. The employee would have to. Offer F N L A, traditional F N L A and user group time, which sounds like that's currently the case over at the schools. Just a little bit of background. So many people are probably aware that the state of Massachusetts passed for paid family leave. It's a payroll tax. So the, the employee would be paying, you know, a portion of the tax and then there's a matching amount by the employer. Municipalities were exempt from that legislation. So municipal employees are, are not part of that program. Municipalities can choose to opt in, but then you're opting in fully as an employer, so it'd be all your employees. So in order to, you know, kind of get around enrolling everyone, you have opportunities such as those being proposed by the school committee. What's being proposed by the school committee to say, uh, within a unit contract, we're just going to offer a fixed amount of parental.
Thank you. No more questions.
Selectman Harrington?
Sounds like you've done a good job on it. It's just like you said, the, the bucket is what's provided and hopefully made it work. Can't, we legitimately can't keep going back to the well. This is only three, you know, it's a three-year contract.
I, I, I will say they did, they did express a gratitude around, I don't wanna suggest that they were completely ungrateful to anyone. They did express gratitude to our first year offer of stream fifteen. Pretty good. And I, you know, and, uh, but the, the idea here, right, is that we also are in a, in a situation where we, we, we just, we didn't have. Any one retirement, but it was not a top step retirement this year. We don't forecast any retirements this coming year. And while we hate to see a seasoned teacher retire, I would be lying if I didn't tell you, if I told you that. When I hear about a retirement at the top step, I immediately think about the sixty to seventy thousand dollars that freeze up in the budget. So two to three years of no retirements at the top step is very, very challenging because everyone else is getting that four percent bump down. And then you put a coal on top of that, you're, and it's eighty, eight, ninety percent of our budget is salaries. So it's, uh. It, it gets out of hand really fast. So, um. So I, they, they were happy with the first year. They, you know, but, um.
Yeah, the profit sector is not saying that.
Yes, no, no.
I don't get that. Selectman Anderson?
First of all, Phil and Dr. Cameron, I want to thank you both for your leadership. You know, we have terrific schools and I, I would say second to no one in this, in this area. So. Thank you again for what you guys provide. Uh, the only question I, I have on, on the parental leave. Um, do you guys require documentation for that or they just say, I'm taking five weeks off?
Uh, no, we do. And they, they fill out that paperwork and they, um, you know, provide us with, uh. Uh, a, a letter indicating they're pregnant and, or they're taking parental leave. Exactly. They have, exactly. They have a condition where they can, uh, apply for and get parental leave.
But thank you guys again. I appreciate it.
Selecting them off. So, so what are the boundaries of parental leave? I mean, is it, is it just newborns and adoptions or where can they take that?
I don't remember what the language was. Um, it's, it is definitely newborns and adoptions for sure. I, I think that's, I think that's all.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's not, it is not, um, like medical. Uh, it's, it's, it's initial childcare for, um, there is language in the proposal itself.
Well, so we, it's not changing the parameters around what already, what they already. May use for parental leave. That's already in the contract now. This would just. Pay for five weeks of it. So there's no change to, to the language.
And the, and the language is specific around adoption. And I think it's within one year. Within one year of those.
So then I have a, a second question. It's more budgetary futuristic. I mean, I've been in this town for years and got a bottle of grandchildren. And, um, and I'm hearing very good things about everything you guys did.
Great.
To echo everything that was said today. But I'm also hearing that, you know, the special needs programs that you guys are doing. Fantastic. And it's almost a bit of a magnet. So that we're seeing people.
Go into that.
Moving into our town.
That's right.
Because of the good job that we're doing and how that impacts our budget. And our future budget. So I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying. And so, so what does that look like and how do we accommodate that? Going forward, because there's going to be more demand on what you're doing and how you're doing it on this town, on this budget.
So, I mean, I'll let you sort of speak to it. I, I will say that from, uh, so my wife is a school psychologist and has joined in a lot of different places and. The, one of the differences between Rentham and other communities is that. The goal for Rentham Special Education Program is to make sure the kids get the services that they need. So if a kid needs help, they qualify for services and they get them. And a lot of other districts. They're working to try to figure out how to not qualify students, so they don't have to provide the service because they're. They're worried about the impact that it will have. Now, of course, we worry about the impact. One of the ways that we sort of have managed that impact, and I think this administration's done an excellent job with, we've got lots of presentations over the years on this. Is that we are able to manage, because of the systems that are in place and the funding that you've given us. Being deployed in the way that it's been done, uh, that's been deployed. We are able to cover, almost always we're able to cover those needs without sending students out. And sending students out can be, you know, single student, I mean, two hundred, eight thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars for a single student. What that means though is when you give really great service or you don't ship the students out. Somebody says, I don't want my kid being shipped out and I live in the next town over. I'm gonna try to buy a house and rent them and send my kid in. And so you do have that, that issue. There are some, there are some improvements that are being worked on at the state level and the state budget or on circuit breaker that, that could be helpful. The business manager seems a little bit less optimistic that we're gonna get a huge pile of money in from that. But, um, our, our state representative is all over this, right? He's, he's, he's very focused on this issue. He understands what's happening and he's, he's aware of it. He's fighting for funding, um, and I think that's really important. Um, I think this is a known issue across the Commonwealth. And we're just sort of in a, in a tough spot because like, we just can't sort of accept an answer. So just let the kids who need something, you know. Not get the service, right?
Yeah, and the, the, the. We've certainly seen an increase in student needs in Rentham, uh, but that's not a Rentham only, uh, situation. You are, the percentage of our students in I E Ps is comparable to surrounding towns, so it's not really that different. But a- as Phil said, for the whole state, there's been an increase in, in student needs, um, both, um. Uh, for students with special education needs, uh, the severity of some of those needs have been, has increased. And for students who don't qualify for special education, there are still some pretty significant gaps in their learning that require, you know, intense short-term interventions. So we've been, as I mentioned at the, at the start, we've been managing that by providing, you know, staff who can target those needs and work with students on them. Um, the hope is that, and as the students continue to kind of grow, they'll develop some skills and they'll be less reliant to those things. But it's certainly, we're in an acute phase right now where we have a pretty, you know, pretty robust number of students who need support. Um, but I'm hopeful that by providing, we'll get them over the hump and they'll be able to, um, rely on those services less.
Yeah, I would just sum, summarize this conversation by saying, uh, again, this board is committed to, you know, partnering with you however we can. Um, you know, I, I would suggest, I mean, you don't have, you know, you guys are professionals. You don't need to take advice from me. But if I'm in your situation and I'm heading negotiations with the union, I wanna make sure all the facts are out there. You know, let's let, the parents deserve to know what the facts are. You know, cause it's very easy to point the finger at the big bad town hall saying they have this pile of money and they're not sharing it. We need to educate people. Education's power and you guys know that. My own, so that would be my only advice. Let's get the facts out there. Make sure people know salaries, you know, all the public information that's out there. You know, the bucket, the history with the bucket. You know, I don't want anyone coming to you saying you've been neglecting these Paris for the last dozen years, you know, because that could be, you know. A perspective. And it's, it's not true because I know the facts, but a lot of people don't. Right? So I think that's my one piece of advice. If you wanna take it is make sure the facts are out there. Um, you know, and, and I, and I love the approach of, hey, I'm empowering you. Here's the money. You guys divide it up however you want, you know, and that's not passing the buck, Phil. You're, you're empowering the staff to make very difficult decisions. So again, that's, I digress, but that would be the one. Piece of not even constructive criticism, but just, uh, you know, you know, that I would offer. Mike, any, anything to add from our perspective?
I think you covered perfectly.
Okay. Uh, so on a lighter note, I think we should segue into.
Alright.
You know, uh, something that, you know, is enticing. Right? Is that, is that, is the discussion about either an ad renovation or a new building that we wanna talk about? So. Please tell us kind of where we're at.
Perfect. Well, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna do a quick overview myself and then we have our, um. Uh, consulting team and, and Jeff and Jesse are on the, uh, on the Zoom here who are gonna walk us through a presentation, but. Um, first I just wanted to say, uh, a, a note of thanks to the Roderick Building Committee, uh, that you all appointed. Almost two years ago now, I think.
Yes.
Um, of which, uh, Vice Chair Rouse is the Vice Chair as well. Um, and that committee has been meeting very regularly over the last two years. Uh, making a lot of sub decisions that go into and discussions and conversations that go into the three major decisions that have been made to date. Uh, that were, we wanted to update you on and then walk you through some of the thinking. Uh, the first decision that we had to make was actually one of the easiest, which was. Where, uh, where the site would be for a new or, or renovated school. And we don't have any other land other than where our existing school is in the fields. And then within that, there's wetlands and septics and slopes. So, and a library. So, um, we were, we were somewhat concerned. That was an easy decision. It's basically going over there. Um, the second decision that was made by the school committee was what to, what to do for grade configuration. And so one of the challenges that we have generally at the rental schools is that the. Um, the Delaney School has always used significant portions of the Vogel Building. Which has decreasing square footage available that is not waterlogged or mold or other kinds of challenges. Not mold.
A dark substance.
Right, not mold, uh, right, uh, wet stuff that looks dark. Uh, so, um. So the Vogel, uh, has really exceeded its useful life and is rapidly on pace to be. Either boarded up or demolished. Um, what that has done with increasing enrollment in the school has meant that Delaney is stuffed. To the gills. And so the school committee in contemplating this and listening and hearing from this, from the school building committee. Um, thought that this would be a great opportunity for us to bring the third grade from Delaney over to a new or renovated building. Um, at the Roderick, that would then allow us to stop using the Vogel space and have room to grow into Delaney. Therefore extending the life of that school significantly and saving us lots of money while taking that. Grade configuration and putting it into a project that is being reimbursed by the state. So we saw that as an opportunity to. Be fiscally prudent around how we can make sure that we maximize the assets that we have. So that was the second decision, was that the new Roderick building, uh, project would include grades three through six. From the existing four through six. Uh, and then the last decision, uh, on last Tuesday was to evaluate the options of. There were three different options for a new building and then there was an add reno, uh, option on the table. Which would require significant renovation of the existing Roderick Building plus in addition. Um, to incorporate the extra space that was required of the third grade and for additional learning areas. Um, also required in that assessment is, um, the state makes you look at how much it would cost. To replace failed or failing systems and bring the current building up to current code without making any other adjustments. So we're gonna talk about money in a minute and our decisions on this, how we thought about this. But basically. Um, without really being able to get reimbursed, because it doesn't meet the needs of our community, the cost of just. Solving the failed or failing systems and code renovations of the Roderick Building is fifty-four million dollars. So it is in bad shape. That building is in rough shape. So. We were given various options last Tuesday. We walked through the various options. And our goal was to say, what is the most fiscally, uh, responsible decision that we can make? One bit of information that we think is important, and then we're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to the, uh, to Jeff over Vertex to start, is in that discussion. There are two ways that you can do this project. You can, you can basically hire a, uh, construction manager to manage the whole project from beginning to end. Assume all the risk and there's one amount and you give them that amount and then they work within that budget. That would be, in the opinion of the consulting team, really the only way to do an ad renovation. Because largely because of the asbestos and PCBs in the existing building and the remediation that would have to happen while students are present. It's just, it's just too much risk. That is much more expensive way of doing things than design bid build. So in the end. And I was, I was confirmed on my drive in tonight that I could say this, Jeff, so don't throw me under the bus. You told me I could say it. Um, we were told and we were convinced that a design bid build. Of a new building would be less expensive than a construction manager at risk for an ad renovation. So the recommendation of the building committee and school committee is to. Um, one, focus on the compact new Bill Patrick option, which was the lowest cost. Option as designed for a new building and to continue to identify space reductions that could. Further bring down the cost where there might be, uh, you know, when you give your ed plan. You tell the state, hey, we'd like six special education classrooms, because that would be terrific if you can have this. And they'll say, well. We'll pay for four of them. That's what's, that's the next phases. So we're not locked into a number. We're not locked into a square footage. We're not locked into any of those other things. But the recommendation based on this information, and Jeff can talk about some of the numbers that he said to us. But the, the market is so aggressive for design bid build and construction right now. The number I'm remembering, Michelle, if you remember correctly, was that one of the bids came in at sixteen or seventeen million dollars under what they had. Gone to town meeting with. And that was the bid that they went with. So, so significant savings by the competition that exists in design bid build. So the recommendation of the school building committee and, uh, that we're seeking endorsement of and, uh, that the school committee endorsed and both of those votes. Were unanimous, so that was great, um, would be to focus on that, but gotten ahead of all of the presentation and all the questions. So I, um, I'll turn it over to Jeff, um, and Jesse.
Thanks. So Jesse's gonna share a screen. I'm, uh, Jeff D'Amico. I'm the Managing Director, uh, your Owners Project Manager from the Vertex Companies. Uh, and with me is, uh, Jesse Saylor from T S K P Studios. He's your, your design architect and gonna walk you through the design presentation. So we have a, a short slideshow today, uh, and, you know, Phil's already kind of given the punchline, uh, and Jesse's starting to share a screen right now. Uh, Jesse will talk about the design options and then I'll pick up about construction phasing and cost. Um, this is just a snapshot of the work that Phil just alluded to. So the M S B A process, uh, is eighteen months long. And obviously the building committee has been working longer than that. Uh, the first phase in orange at the top was really that site selection. But it's important to note that the school committee is also working in parallel. They're developing the educational program, how you deliver education today. And how you wanna deliver it tomorrow. And that's that kind of peach bar at, at the bottom. They also make the decision based on the enrollment, um, for the reasons that Phil alluded to in terms of, uh, decanting space on Delaney. And maximizing the M S B A's reimbursement benefits by bringing that extra grade over now as part of this capital project in the pipeline. We're taking place in the middle blue bar there, which is the preferred schematic, which is where you choose the option that you wanna ultimately bring back to the voters of Rentham. Uh, and that's the options between the new construction and the ad reno that we'll be discussing tonight. Um, there's still work to be done. And so the bottom green bar is the schematic design. Roughly, you're gonna bring the overall design to thirty percent complete. Before you ask the voters and the M S B A for not to exceed value that will carry you for the remaining four years of the project. So you're gonna ask for all design funds. And all construction funds, which differs probably from typical capital projects you guys do here in district. Uh, last thing I wanna note about the slide, just those yellow stars are community forums. So we've, uh, we've engaged the community multiple times during those first two phases. And we'll continue along that during schematic and into the actual town meeting, heading towards the June of twenty twenty-six town meeting. Uh, Jesse's gonna walk you through the design, then I'll pick back up talking about construction phasing and schedule.
All right. Thank you, Jeff and Phil for that very thorough prelude. Um, this is the existing Roderick School Site. Uh, as Phil described, it's, it's the best site in Rentham. We've looked at others. Uh, and every site has some development constraints which are shown on this slide and, and Phil mentioned most of them. Uh, wetlands occur to the east and north of the Roderick School Building. You can see them in cyan. There're septic leaching fields, uh, which serve a number of town buildings, so we wanna stay away from them in development. Uh, one is directly to the west of the Roderick School. And there are steep slopes particularly to the south on this site as they rise up to the top of Nook uphill, but also to the east of the Roderick School. Where it slopes down to the wetland areas. So the best locations for development on this site are represented in this heat map, which avoids those kinds of constraints. Uh, through the course of the feasibility study, we've explored many options for the site. Here we've overlaid seven of the building footprints that we studied. Uh, and you can see we've really canvassed the developable area with options. Uh, we've worked collaboratively with the school building committee to focus down now on a preferred solution. Uh, but tonight we'll present the top two options to you. Uh, and this is the runner-up option. This is the addition renovation. Uh, and this is the runner up option. This is the addition renovation. Uh, this option nearly doubles the usable area of the existing school by building a two-story addition to the south. On the location of the current playground. To do this, the main entrance of the school moves to the west side facing Randall Road where it collects all the vehicular parking. And allows for the administration offices, which are also moved to the west side of the school to safe to monitor the approach to the building. With all the public vehicles now removed from the bus loop, pedestrian safety between the two schools is improved in this option. And we've located a new playground in this more secure area between the new schools. You see it on the upper right of the, of the existing building. In order to fit the addition without permanently displacing any athletic fields. This option flirts with the wetland edge. You can see the addition is right up to the no work zone buffer line of the wetlands. Uh, while no, uh, athletic fields are permanently displaced in this option. Gilpatrick Field is taken offline for a significant time during construction of the addition and the geothermal well field. Here are some preliminary three di- three dimensional visualizations of what the ad reno option could look like. In the upper right view, you can see the single story footprint of the existing building, which is in lighter wood color. And the slightly darker two-story addition extending, uh, from that existing building footprint to the right, which is to the south. Oh, I'm not sure why this skipped there. I'm going back. Sorry. Uh, in the bottom left, you see a view of the main entry. The new gymnasium is featured prominently near the main entrance where it will be visible and accessible to the community. And the bottom right view shows the relocated playground, which is now adjacent to the cafeteria. And protected from public vehicular circulation. The bottom center view is a cutaway view showing the new entrance lobby with the stair heading up to the second floor classroom wing of the addition. All right. Next option. This is the new building at Gilpatrick and this is the preferred solution. It locates a new building directly to the south of the existing Roderick School. This option has a clear singular main entrance which collects arrivals from, from either a car or bus. To a safe and manageable entry adjacent to the administrative offices. This site plan shows both cars and buses coming from Taunton Road, which is different from how the school currently operates. We have another option of this, uh, of the circulation of the same building option where the cars come from Randall Road and that works as well. Uh, we're still studying the preferred traffic approach to the school. This is our most compact building option, which also means it has the most efficient thermal envelope and is the most cost effective. This option increases the parking count from what you have now, reducing the need for the school to share the field parking. Let's talk about fields in this option. This option removes one ball field, the Gilpatrick Field. Which could be replicated at an off-site location such as Rice. This option adds a multi-purpose playfield for the school. Uh, the playground in this option is located on the protected south side of the building. Where it is also accessible and visible to families using the fields when school is not in session. In the upper right view, you can see that the Gilpatrick option is located such that its entry plaza is, uh. Is in connection with the entrance to Fisk Library. This option is organized around a gable roof central corridor that traverses the short dimension of the building. The bottom left image is a preliminary view of the entry plaza. Please notice that the building is single story at the entry plaza, allowing, uh, welcoming sunshine into the plaza. This space should be warm and inviting. The image in the bottom middle is just inside the entry doors. The central corridor here is a daylit room for the Rentham community. To the left is the cafeteria and to the right is the gym. In the image on the bottom right, we see that the end of the corridor, uh, where it arrives at an outdoor playground. Play is an important part of elementary school's daily life. And this option locates it very intentionally along the major circulation axis.
Thanks, Jesse. Um, so a bit about schedules. I noted, uh, with the successful submission of the preferred schematic, the end of this month. Will then kick into the schematic design phase and that'll take us through, uh, the winter of next, this coming year. We'll bring it to a town meeting in June of twenty twenty-six where the town will approve a not to exceed amount. From there, it's about a year of design and permitting, uh, and then breaking ground in terms of, of fall of twenty twenty-seven. The bottom chart shows the two different durations of ad reno versus new construction. So the ad reno. Is a thirty-two month aggressive schedule, uh, and has multiple move-ins with four separate move-ins, which I'll show on the, uh, following slide. And then the new building, including the demo phase of the original Roderick is twenty-seven months in totality. Next slide, Jesse. So just to kind of allude, the options on the right side is the new build, which is essentially building the new school in the bottom, uh, blue in phase one. And that's about a twenty-one month duration and then move into the new building, then abate demolish. And finish the athletic field, parking lot, site circulation for the remaining six months. So that's a total build of about twenty-seven months. With the ad reno, both Vertex and TSKP did a test fit to make sure it was doable and achievable. Um, as Phil alluded to earlier on, within ad reno, both consultants would recommend bringing in a construction manager at risk. Because you really have to get down to a fine level of detail as to how you want to approach that building, having it fully occupied during all phases of the project. But the test fit works in the sense that we have a, an addition that's built in sixteen months. That's a very aggressive but achievable schedule to build an addition. Uh, and, but there's not a lot of float within that. Once you build that in phase one, we would then move the students into the new addition. And then work around the building kind of in a clockwork fashion during separate sub-phases. Uh, first one being, uh, four months and that kind of takes the left side of the building along with the existing original gymnasium slash band room in the back. There would have to be hard partitions there. As Phil alluded to, there will be abatement ongoing, uh, during the full duration of the overall project. There's too much work to kind of handle that all on what's known as a summer slammer. Uh, but we did find ways to compartmentalize the renovation into large enough zones. Where a CM can kind of bite it off, keep the kids separate and safe and keep the school operational and functional. And so that takes place over the course of those four separate phases. And like I said, it takes about thirty-two months. So there'd be major moves during each of those phases where the new building on the right, just one main move. So there's inherently more ancillary costs in an ad reno versus the new construction. Next slide. Um, so this is a, a snapshot of the overall cost. Uh, everybody always wants to fast forward to the end of what's it going to cost, uh, overall total project cost? What's it going to cost the town? What's the potential reimbursement for the MSBA? I have to put these disclaimers out there because this is very early in the process in terms of trailing down on this level of reimbursement. Uh, the MSBA has not given us full guidance, uh, and so this is based on Vertex's best practices. Historical data and how we've seen the MSBA viewed in the past, along with the initial round of comments that we received two weeks ago back from the MSBA. So we have updated that, um, since we first put these numbers out in early July, if you've seen other presentations in town. Uh, we've also removed the options that are no longer in consideration, uh, and so just focusing on the two. So the top two rows are, if you were to pursue construction manager risks, so the ad reno. Uh, is about an eighty-six million dollar estimated construction cost, uh, as Jesse alluded to, we have a placeholder there for replicating the, the loss of fields. On the Rice complex. So there's two fields that are taken offline for three to four years. And so this would be, and we understand that that's a large self-funding portion of the recreational program. And so there's a, amount of money set aside here to address that. There's also soft costs. Soft costs is accumulation of your consultant fees, your permitting cost. Your insurances, your bonds, as well as all contingencies, making up the largest percentage of that, including FFNE furniture fixtures, technology and equipment. So that rolls up to the total soft cost and then comes across to total project cost, which in the ad reno as a CM project is about a hundred and fifteen million. The Gilpatrick all-new construction cost is about a hundred and twenty-two million. And the Gilpatrick design build is about a hundred and sixteen point six million. One of the things to note there is the main driver between why the ad reno is less than Gilpatrick when it compare a new construction to ad reno. Is that currently the Gilpatrick is larger than the ad reno. When you're building on the existing building, the, a lot of times the existing size of the room is the size. You're not building it to the ideal standard. Of how you would build a construction in twenty-first century education or to work with the educational program that the school department has developed for you. So there are compromises in the ad reno that are not reflected, uh, in the Gilpatrick. There are efficiencies that are still available to be tightened up in the Gilpatrick. And that's a charge that the committee has given back to the design team and something we're already actively looking at. And we found areas to reduce a significant amount of square footage in the Gilpatrick option. And something we'll be cranking through as we go through designed, sorry, schematic design. Um, but the real question everybody asks is what is the peach and what does it mean to the town in terms of green? I've had to put a very conservative estimate. So because the MSBA hasn't given you the full, uh, uh, compilation of what their comments are. Because they've given initial feedback that says several of these items are ineligible, but you still have the ability to tighten it up. The building committee still has work to be done. They still have decisions to make, wh- whether it's CM versus de- design bid build. Decisions to make, what are the mechanical systems? Which road do we connect to? Like Randall Road versus Taunton Street? Uh, down to what are the finishes in the building, right? So there are many decisions that'll happen between now and the June town meeting. And so that will influence that. And so, you know, what I present here is more of the floor. Uh, it shows an effective rate of about, you know, thirty-four to thirty-six percent. I think the final number will be higher. But until we make those decisions with the committee, I can't, uh, in good faith, put those numbers up there until the decisions are behind the committee. Um, so ultimately what that means is the overall net cost of the town is somewhere in the, you know, mid-seventy million to low eighty million. But again, that's based on the current metrics that are out there today and the building committee has already charged the group. With tightening up the overall design to really get that square footage of the new construction down. But the building committee did choose to go with Gilpatrick. They have made a final determination on CM risk versus design bid build. But as I told Phil on the ride in and how he quoted me earlier, the number will come down less than what you see for the design bid build and what I'm showing on the screen here. Historically, we carry what? A five percent less, uh, for five percent premium for CM risk versus design bid build. And you see that when you compare the total cost of the Gilpatrick CM versus Gilpatrick design bid build. Vertex alone has opened two hard bids in the last three months. And the bids range from seventeen percent under budget to eleven percent under budget. So dramatically aggressive bidding going on right now in hard bid world. And so even if the market rebounds and that goes back up, it will still be a greater delta than the five percent that we're showing here, but we have to cap the cost. Five years out from when you would actually be completing your overall project. That concludes our presentation. Um, this last slide here is just a cost, is an overall comparison. So it's not just about money. The building committee has made a lot of hard decis- decisions. They've had a lot of long debates over the course of the past twelve months with the consultants available. They established project-specific criteria to your town, such as meeting the educational program, certainly cost. Duration, uh, disruption to the students, disruption to the recreation fields, the sustainability goals, swing space, traffic impacts, parking, onsite circulation. Permitting approvals, flexibility. One of the things you want to keep in mind is not just build for today, but make sure you have space for an addition to build for tomorrow. Um, so that's in there as well. Uh, district operations such as busting and logistics. Impacts to neighbors, uh, campus connections and then impacts to Delaney and Vogel. And lastly, impacts to the playground. And then they evaluated those on all of the options. And this is the snapshot of the final two. You can clearly see that the Gilpatrick new construction option. Outperforms the ad reno on each of those categories. And so that, some of the conclusions is why the building committee landed where they did. With their recommendation for a new construction option for Gilpatrick. So I hope that's enough from the fire hose. Uh, these are just a couple of summary points that we put at the end of the slide that, uh, people can read in their packet. But essentially the, it includes the Vogel demolition. There is disruption of sweat field and all the ad reno, as well as new construction options, taking that offline for at least three seasons. Um, and that there is, um, there's still work to be done. There's savings to be had in design bid build. We've identified about sixty-five hundred square feet so far in the Gilpatrick option that we can remove. Working with Alan and his team to tighten up some of the special education spaces, some of the grossing factors, some of the hallways, to really get the building as efficient as possible. Um, there's ways to get that square footage down. And then lastly, we still have to talk about what to do about Randall. We do not currently show the cost for a traffic light at Randall Road in one A. Uh, but that is a discussion that the building committee is having about, you know, the likelihood of that or the need for that. So that concludes our presentation. I'll turn it back to Phil to, to manage Q and A in front of you.
Yeah, but unfortunately our, our, uh, our internet, um, got unstable for a minute, but, um. So I just wanted to make sure that the most important thing that we heard in that meeting was, is clear, which is that. The, the hard bit, the design bid build is, um. Has been very aggressive in terms of pricing. And so the conclusion at the, the end was that, and that we've tightened up. What we can tighten up in the ad reno after the last meeting that we had with all of you where you asked us to do that, the one thousand six hundred.
New construction. We tighten up the square footage in the new construction. The ad renos. Square footage wouldn't change. The, the new construction option has ability to tighten up.
Right. You already did the, uh, the tightening.
We already did the tightening with the adder, with the ad reno. We looked at a previous ad reno option back in February that was, uh, more extensive. So this ad reno was the tightened version and now we're going to do the same tightening on Gilpatrick. And Jesse, if you, if I paraphrase or said something wrong, speak up.
No, I, I agree. That, that's right. Keep going.
Sixteen hundred square feet at eight hundred. Per square foot is not just small savings, right? So, you know, over a million, well over a million already identified. So that's where we, uh, that's, that's where we landed. The one other thing just to, for all of you to be aware of is that we did, uh, we had a joint meeting with the rec. Uh, uh, commission and we've had multiple meetings with various members of the rec committee. We've had feedback from Rentham Baseball and others. One challenge is, is that we actually. They include, on their recommendation, two fields here to go to Rice to complete the master plan there. We included that in our bid and were initially rejected from an MSBA to consider bundling, saying that we could not have it in the same vote, assuming part of the same project. We have appealed that decision because we basically said. We are eliminating two fields around where else to put them and we need them. Um, the consulting team is not terribly confident that we'll be able to be successful on that appeal. Um, but it does include that million and a half for relocation of fields in the numbers that we showed you. Those are non-reimbursable. Costs, they're allowable, but not re- well, now they're not even allowable, but, um, relocation of the fields onsite would be allowable. Um, but non-reimbursable demolition of Vogel is included in that number as well.
So the one, the one point five million for the new fields is not included in this number?
It is.
It's included in the number, but overall currently the MSBA has rejected it, saying that. Well, they fear is that towns bundle projects. If you're doing something offsite, you know, it looks like you're kind of, essentially pork barreling the project. And so they take a hard stance on that. We're trying to make the pitch that it's enabling work because we've displaced the fields and therefore it's directly tied.
And there's no way to, uh, I know you've, you've, you've looked at this, but there's no way to the east of LaRusso. We can't put another field. I know it's, the terrain is hilly, but behind Heckler. And to the east of LaRusso, there's no way to put another field back there.
We didn't really explore additional options there because the strong desire of the rec department was to relocate the fields over to Rice. So that's what we went with. I mean, we were disrupting their fields. We had a meeting with them and they said, they showed us the map.
And they said. So the problem I have with that. Is that you, the right, the, the recreation department might feel that way.
Yeah.
But the baseball, I, I, what is the baseball people? Because as you know, you've got two groups that try to work very well together, but they have ultimately different goals. There's a, there's a huge group of parents, uh, that I'm familiar with because my sons, my, my, both of my kids play baseball and softball down there.
Yeah.
That they do not want to see.
Yes.
These fields go away.
Yep.
So that's why I had to ask that question.
Yep.
Then you have another group of people in town, and I respect both opinions, that want to see the master plan of the Rice. Complex come to fruition and support anything they can to move whatever fields they can to further develop Rice. Right? I just think you're going to be asked that difficult question by a lot of the people that, uh, support. You know, that want to keep sweat fields, uh, where they are. If, you know, if you guys have looked at putting the field. To the east of LaRusso behind Heckler, because it looks to me like there is space back there. And I don't even know if that's the right move. I just want to at least bring it up as a question. Yeah, just something to bring to the.
Yeah, we could certainly look. That's, we can certainly look at that. Um, that's also a decision that comes, it, we, you know, that's not part of this, this decision, uh, making process. So it is possible, we certainly would not be able to get both of those included in this vote.
Sure.
Maybe if we're successful in getting, and I think, um. So the baseball people did come to the, both of the meetings.
Yeah.
And they said that they would basically probably do nothing, right? To the space, right? Which is, uh.
So don't disturb the space.
Yeah.
That's what they said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, look, they, they love the space. I mean, I understood it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a special place. It really is.
And then, and then we also, you know, I've heard from folks in that community who've said, well, that. Multi-purpose field that isn't baseball or softball would be nice because if you don't do baseball and softball, then you don't have any fields that are usable down here. So one of the options that we have is where Roderick is now, uh, where that's, it could be, you know, flag football, lacrosse, soccer. Field hockey, right? Lots of other sports that don't require dining. So I think there's. I think there's different options. I mean, all of that is on the table. None of that needs to be decided now, but it is important for us to think about. Um how we do it. Uh in this option, in the Gil Patrick option. Gil Patrick would be eliminated and you'd still have the three.
Yeah.
Fields after construction, so we would only really have to relocate one field. You guys can tell me about the Hornets Nest that creates with rec, but they they were, they were, you know, they were basically. Pretty pretty adamant that they thought that.
I think that's, again, it's it could be the best option, but it's one group. That's one group of things.
Sure.
When you talk to the baseball people, they're passionate that you don't touch anything, right? So I just think, again, I'm not suggesting that you do anything.
Right.
I'm just suggesting you be ready to have that conversation.
Sure.
You know, uh when it comes up, because you're gonna have passionate people on.
That's right.
On all sides.
Well, maybe you guys can fund the two fields that go over to Rice, and then we'll take care of the old guy on the back.
Sure, we'll take that off the budget.
Okay, good. Yeah, good. Yeah.
Yeah, the school budget. The second, the second piece of, the second piece of feedback that I have. Um and again, I think this is a great job, great job to the team, you know, uh great job to everyone. Vertex, the OPM, you know, we're we're doing a s- uh a much smaller project right now, which. And and by the way, Mike King is also on the school committee uh. Building project, and he's also on the DPW project with me and a a another group of people. One of the things I can't stress enough is what we've learned throughout the process is um this FFNE can kill you.
Yeah.
Uh these finishes, you know, and I say this respectfully to the design team.
I know.
You know, we want durable, that lasts for fifty years. I don't need fancy glass and, you know, you I just be very careful.
You meant Michelle, Ed.
Yeah, well, I think, I think, I think, I think, uh what is that, Burns of a Feather, my dog together? Um and and that's, that's basically the direct, you know, that's, that's how we start every meeting with the DPW group is. Don't give me anything that's gluteen glamorous.
That's right.
You know, like I said, we're not Dover. You know, we want a safe building for our kids. We want a safe building for our teachers. Uh but the taxpayers don't want to spend two hundred million dollars.
Right.
You know.
Uh Jesse, Jesse had to um have his beautiful designs um. Critiqued for uh he built this beautiful images of everything. He said, those hallways look a little wide. Let's uh let's pull those in. So. It's, you know, a worthy place where uh the architects dreams go to die. Um sorry, Jesse, uh but.
No, no.
Right. So the other two building options that we jettisoned. I don't want to say fairly quickly, because you did give them a thorough view. When we saw it, the difference in price was purely driven by square footage, and that square footage was. A combination of aesthetics and some like improved circulation or things, and we were like. You know, seven million dollars for wider hallways and, you know, more light, that's not the project we're doing. And we understand why it's an option. We understand in some communities that's gonna be what they want to do. But um we pretty quickly congealed around the compact cost effective option and then seeing how it becomes.
And more a lot of people be driven too by what MSBA will reimburse, like, like we talked about that, right? Like if the, if they say this is the classroom size that we'll reimburse up to.
And I I I will ask Jeff to clarify this for me, but I believe that the document, if I read these, prepare the comments properly is. Uh the range that you're allowed to have for a classroom is nine hundred square feet to a thousand square feet. And we're at nine ten, so we're pretty close to, is that correct? Did I get Jesse? Yeah, there's not.
Yeah, that's right. Yep.
Correct. We all didn't want to, thank you. We also didn't want to do. You know, we 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 reduced it by, you know, a a fairly decent amount, so. It's still a break space, nine hundred ten square feet, like is phenomenal.
It's amazing. This is.
But we we have tried to really be very thoughtful about that. And so, yes, we are responding now to the comments that we got back. Um from the, so they already laid out for us preliminarily. Either, yes, this is fine, what you put in here. Um we need more information before we can approve it, or this seems to exceed guidelines, what's going on, and you can either try justify it or shrink it. So as an example, the one thousand six hundred fifty square feet would be things that are non-reimbursable. Or otherwise, sort of, uh I think they're all non-reimbursable, and so it's a, we can live without that, get her off there. We're not getting them. And that incre- that both decreases the cost and increases the effective reimbursement rate, because we're eliminating. Non-reimbursable space.
Great.
And yeah.
That includes tearing down both other buildings.
So Vogel, yeah. Vogel and um Roderick and all the site work and all site work. Yeah, well, the only thing it does not include is the principal of the Roderick School. Um stated to the committee that he believes the circulation through. Through um Randall Road would be, or cars would be preferable, so keeping the same road circulation we have now. Because we already have the traffic issues over on Taunton Street with the Ray School. Um and I guess, was it like forty years ago, they identified a need for a traffic light over here? Um.
At the end of Randall Road?
At the end of Randall Road.
Yeah.
And it's pretty expensive, and so.
Million and a half, right?
It's gonna be a seven figure something.
Yeah.
And so.
If 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 I can. So so when they they built the new public safety building twenty years ago, we tried to get a light there.
Yeah.
Now, Steve T said no.
Mm-hmm.
But I'll tell you right now, like, like I'm at the post office every day, and there were.
Oh, yeah.
It it's busy, you know, weekends down there, so.
Dance, three pugs.
Yeah, if you don't have a date, yeah, like, parents maybe dropping kids off. We could be taking fifteen, twenty minutes to get out.
Out, I believe.
So so I mean.
Yeah.
But but you should have a discussion with Mass DOT now.
So.
Because it's it's taken them over twenty years to finally put the slipper up and up them all.
Right, exactly.
So, yeah, I I I would.
So so we, Mike is, Mike is, has been really great in giving us updates on the on the two options, I think, that we could consider, right? One is to go the uh Mass DOT route, which. You know, we may need a new school by the time we get that thing built, so. And then there is an option where we can pay for all the site work and do everything else, and that's the seven figures that you're talking about.
Yeah, so uh I reached out to to Mass DOT about this early on in the in the process of the project. And uh, you know, they they presented the two options as was just related. So the first one would be, you know, you try to build a normal process for Mass DOT. And into the school committee chair's point, you know, the school probably already be built by the time that would happen, if it happened at all. Um the other option was to um seek an an access permit with Mass DOT. Uh where the town could pay for the cost of installing a traffic uh light at that intersection. Uh would be able to do it within a shorter, much shorter timeframe. Uh the issue that was brought up. To us was that once you touch that intersection, it's not just putting in the traffic, so you know, you have to bring up. The entire intersection to mascot's current standards.
Right.
And that's what drove the cost to, but I was given a number of approximately million dollars.
Who's paying for that?
Was that something that could be included into this project?
We're asked, we are gonna ask that, so we did not include it in the original, but it's something that we could include it. We we could ask to have included. And we think there's a better likelihood of that, and I know it's hard to guess, but a better likelihood of a traffic light than than the fields. Jeff? Traffic getting included as non-bundling.
It's, it's still to be determined, you know, if it was dedicated just to the school driveway, they let you do it. But right now, there's a lot of commercial properties on that road and other town municipal properties, so. It could be viewed as a townwide upgrade as well. Um so that that conversation needs to occur. If it was a traffic light. Two feet of school driveway is an example off Taunton Road, they would allow you to do something that there, but non-reimbursable. But Randall Road has a lot of other occupants on it.
And it would be non-reimbursable, even if they approved it.
We're paying for it, but it would be allowed to be included in a bonding.
Right.
The money that Governor Haley has just allocated to roads and pathways, I think that you'd see, you think? For this.
So, you know, the town would have the ability, um you know, that would be kind of a select for plan. Um to. Start to set aside maybe some chapter ninety funds to to supplement some project like this, and obviously knowing the cost, and that would get, you know, on average, four hundred thousand dollars a year. In chapter ninety funds, uh would you say delay that for some some road projects? Um and possibly put it aside to dedicate for traffic.
So we don't get, so we don't get extra chapter ninety?
Well, there are some additional funds that they put in for this year. Um we're not getting a million dollars.
Yeah, okay.
So we we do that, we we lose ability to repave roads in other areas of downtown.
Like Mike said, that that's not just putting a traffic light in, like slip lane in.
Turn lane.
Turn lane.
Yeah, it's a big.
If there if there's.
Yeah, yeah, mo- mo- you got mobile, you got that building on the corner, the house on the corner, and you get the two across the street. It's a massive undertaking.
Massive.
Yeah. If we can ever get it approved. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh any uh any other comments from the board members about this wonderful project? A lot of work went into it. I mean that with all due sincerity and respect. Um it's, you know, eh like, like I say, it's it's a, it's it's a, it's it's um. It's just a, it's just a lot of money, you know, and the townspeople have a big decision to make.
Yeah.
You know?
It's big money and the ancillary costs that go with it.
That's right.
Like light, baseball fields, uh playgrounds.
Yeah.
Right. Non-reimbursable and then.
And then we, you know.
About a million dollars, like it's.
Right.
Let's go grab a burger.
And we talk, and and we do talk about, you know, fields potentially getting relocated, but as I've talked to our wonderful recreation director. Who, you know, I appreciate everything he does and his team's incredible. Um the 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 draw of the fields. Is that it's right downtown. Kids can literally walk and ride their bikes from school to there, until we get this. Rail project or the uh metacoma project or the rail trail thing, there's no safe way to get the kids from downtown. To Rice Complex on sidewalks.
Right.
So it's another thing you gotta be cognizant of, because I'd be concerned, I am concerned as a parent, you know, with children saying. You know, hey, we can bike here, you know.
Right, yeah.
Versus, so that's another thing too. Did my, again, I'm saying.
One of the things that has been in in my mind and thinking about, understanding the cost, right, is that um. There's fifty-four million dollars of kind of unavoidable costs in the next five years.
Right, sure. You're saying they're gonna make us do something at some point.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, when when, you know, when the heating system fails, it's going to be millions of dollars to require or per replace it. Right? Like, that's what it costs now for that size. So we can come in two years and say, the pneumatic heating system from nineteen fifty-four has failed. And we need two and a half million dollars for a new heating system. Where does it come from? No reimbursement, nothing. And it's roof, windows, all of it. So they did the analysis, so seventy-seven million. That comes in under bid by ten percent. Seventy million, it sounds like a lot, it's sixteen million more than we're on the hook for. Or it's already there. It's just whether we pay for it now or later.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but you're assuming the fifty-four million is a one-time hit. The fifty-four million in of repairs doesn't need to be done all at once.
No, I agree.
So that I, it's just not an apples to apples comparison, I'm saying. We're on the hook for fifty-four million, but no one's saying we're on the hook for fifty-four million next year.
Right, but certainly much more than that over the course of.
Yeah, of course.
Over the year, twenty years.
Of course, no, no debate there.
Yeah.
How much money have they spent on the mobile building in the last twenty years? Just to just to patch it up and keep it.
I mean, quite a bit, quite a bit, yes. I don't have a number off the top of my head, but.
A lot.
A lot, yes, definitely.
Remember that roof is a slate roof, that there's any repairs that when I was on school, we had to do repairs and it's pretty colorful.
Yeah.
But still, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, yes, we sweat quite a bit.
I I think just to reemphasize in terms of the committee, we're really fight, fiscally, trying to be very responsible and understand the. The demands that we have on residents in town. Um just to kind of emphasize on the fields, Gil Patrick will be affected whichever way we had gone. For at least a couple of years. So if we did the adreno, it's the land egg spot. So we're losing that for three, three years, was it?
It was longer, more than than three.
Yeah, and and then um.
Yes, a hundred percent.
So that will, that was factored in too. We certainly listen to all sides of that and understand the sensitivity to it. Um.
And get. No, I I I commend the building committee. I think, you know, it's it's very clear that you looked at this with a very. Cons- fiscally conservative, you know, approach. All I'm trying to do is offer you some.
Yeah.
Critique on what, you know, what stakeholders are gonna be asking you some tough questions so that you can be ready.
Yeah.
You know, to 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 further enter those.
And we will have, we're working actually on the Q and A doc that.
Yeah, and it's great to get the perspective now and hear it, so we can think it through, repair, make sure we're doing things ahead of time, so.
Yeah, but I I want to be clear, I'm not suggesting that you haven't done your due diligence.
Yeah, thank you.
But, you know, and gone over this with a fine comb, because, I mean, I know my vice chair, how thorough she is. I know our town moderator very well. And I happen to know our town manager pretty well, so three of your committee members are like-minded, my way, fiscally responsible. So I know that, and I know you guys do a great job too, and you're very intelligent individuals, so uh and any, any comments from this side of the room?
No, all all good, yeah.
All good, right, yeah. Okay, so I guess you're looking for us to vote, uh a a a vote of, um let me just get my endorsement. Your vote of endorsement, let me get my verbiage out so I don't screw it up. Uh, okay, so at this time, by a chair, I would entertain a motion to endorse the recommendation. From the school building committee to select the Gil Patrick new construction option. As the preferred schematic option to submit to the MSBA for Roderick Elementary School project. So motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectman Lamoth. Any further discussion? Being done, all in favor? Aye. Any oppose? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Congratulations.
Right, yeah, well, look forward to coming back and giving you an update anytime, you guys come in.
Uh, just meetings on the second. Time to be up in two hours.
Apologize for the late meeting, guys.
Thank you. It was great to be here.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. Thank you for being here.
Really, really good, man.
All right.
And uh, I'm glad that your air conditioning works better than this.
Yeah, I'm sweating. All right, uh at this time, have a great night, everybody.
Same thing, you guys.
At this time, we're gonna move right along. We're gonna go to uh, looks like tab twelve, which is old business, update on the MBTA communities. Uh Tom Manager King, do you have an update for us?
I do. Um, there's been a few since we last met, so I just want to catch up the board and the public on where we currently stand with uh the MBTA Communities Act and compliance. Uh so the the Attorney General's Office issued a second advisory on MBTA Communities Act compliance uh back in July. Uh it states that the AG's office will not be proceeding with legal action this summer or fall against municipalities. Uh who are taking steps towards compliance. Um so this allows Rentham the necessary time for public outreach in advance. Of placing a compliance zoning article on a fall town meeting warrant, uh without the immediate concern of a civil enforcement case. Uh additionally, I have met with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Uh to advise them of Brentham's plan for a fall town meeting warrant article. And I also have a meeting with the Attorney General's Office uh later this week to update them as well.
That's great. Uh I do just want to mention to the board one quick uh point that was brought to my attention in one of the local papers. Um I was misquoted regarding the MBTA communities. It said Selectman Gallo now supports the MBTA community zoning. Uh so I just want to clarify that point. As this board knows, and as anyone watching at a town uh at home knows. This board has been very transparent about what our goals were relating to the MBTA communities. I personally do not support the MBTA communities zoning by law. I feel like, I still feel like zoning is meant to be a local thing. It's meant to be voted on by the voters. That's why we have a home rule petition, and that's why we have a charter. Okay, what we did was, we pushed back and we filed a lawsuit based on the unfunded mandate determination from the state auditor. The auditor made that determination, not us. Based on that information, we uh pushed back and, like I said, took legal action. The legal action that we took unfortunately did not go the way we hoped it would. And at the, uh you know, and then it was brought to our attention that not only will we lose these small ancillary grants. Um that were originally disclosed as part of compliance and non-compliance with this zoning. It was then brought to our attention that we could essentially lose chapter ninety funds. We could lose this M M M MSBA grant. For the schools that we just talked about. It was then that we huddled with our attorney, and this board decided that although we didn't agree with. Uh the decision for Judge Gil Day, and we still didn't support the MBTA community zoning bylaw. It was for, it was our fiduciary responsibility to the voters of Rentham not to jeopardize these. Tens of millions of dollars in grants. So that's very different than saying Selectman Gallo now supports. MBTA communities. I will note that that the gentleman who wrote that article is a a a Rentham resident. Um, you know, his views and my views don't always line up. Um and it's unfortunate that, you know, he's supposed to be, uh, you know, a reporter. He's supposed to report, you know, facts and not opinion. So I just want to clarify that, in case you guys have heard that.
Why'd you did that?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, so I was away in vacation.
Yes, sir.
I believe I got an email. Uh that um, there's a. Maybe a section of of different communities that are trying to like appeal.
Yes, yes. Mike, do we, do Mike and Michelle, do you want to share? Do we have any info on that?
So so is my understanding that the town of Middleton in particular um is strongly looking, if not already at the end.
Okay. And we don't know what that looks like, what the appeal process looks like, and, you know, I think I know what the outcome's gonna be. Uh and that's why we didn't go that route.
No, I I think he's referring to the letter that you've got looking for signatures.
Yes, so there's a, there, you know, so from what I understand, the email that I received and voted on is that um. Yes, so there's a, there, you know, so from what I understand, the email that I received and voted on is that, um. A group of residents of the state are taking upon themselves to try to get signatures, to put information on, on the, on the ballot, state ballot.
To get this put on an actual ballot?
Yes.
To be voted on by them?
Yes, and to get.
Voters.
And to take back local zoning.
So, so does that have to be approved by the Secretary of, of?
I'm, I'm unsure of the process, the letter was soliciting for assistance in getting the required signatures. Like, what, do you know?
Yeah, so, so here, there's a sign. So, you've probably seen it, you go to the local supermarket, there's somebody outside answering, um, signatures for ballot petition, that, that's similarly what the case is here. Um, so they would have to gather requisite amount of signatures and present it, um, to the, to the Secretary of State. Um, hoping to get that on a, on a voter ballot.
So are we, as a select board, willing to support that initiative?
And I don't know if it's, if it's select board driven or red, individual resident driven.
I believe it's individual residents driven, that individual residents, but it seems to be from towns that.
Have.
Have strong opposition to the overreach of the MBTA Communities Act.
Yeah.
So they're looking for someone to sponsor this initiative within our town?
They, they've already received the sponsorship to move this forward, I, they believe that from that memo, they're looking for individuals to stand and collect signatures. Throughout the state, yeah.
So they're not looking for a specific Rentham resident to act as a.
Yeah, I think they already received that core group of individuals to push this to this next step.
Okay.
And they're looking to get, you know, more involvement to get these signatures, so if there's anyone that's, that wants to do that.
How would, if, if a resident is listening to us right now, how could we get them, you know, information? Um, relating to this initiative, if they, if this is something that they would support, can we look into that?
What is, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll look into that, and we'll, we'll put it on one of our next MBTA community updates, but great question, very, yeah. Um, anything else on MBTA communities? Mike, anything else on MBTA communities, Bill?
No, I think what you said is very accurate, as we both indicated when we had our meeting with the Congressman, um, you know. It's, it is what it is, it's, we, we collectively did the best we could. And now we're gonna bite the bullet and move on.
Right, okay, um, so no further discussion, let's go to tab thirteen, public forum. Uh, this is the time in our meeting where we, uh, we opened the meeting up. Uh, for public comment from the residents, residents who wish to participate in public comment will be allotted two minutes to speak and must state their name and address for the record. Uh, at the start of the comment, a timer will be sent via message, instant message from Amanda Vazapolo. It should be visible on the top of the screen and the alarm chime when time's up, so do we have any other residents, uh, here? That would like to make a public comment? Raise your hand, speak now, forever hold your peace. Give you a few seconds. Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to tab fourteen, town manager's report, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, so I'd like to begin with a, uh, an update on our grand reopening of Sweat Park, um, since we last met. So the, the grand reopening and driven cutting of first Sweat Park renovation project, uh, was held on Thursday, July four. Uh, the event was very well attended, um, featuring inaugural pickleball games, music, an ice cream truck, community barbecue. Uh, the Sweat Park reopening was a, a team effort with multiple departments contributing to the event's success. Uh, including the, the DPW facilities, police department, recreation and administration. Um, so I just wanna recognize, you know, that it was a huge undertaking for the community and the departments and everybody pitched in.
Yeah.
Uh, we saw the results of it that, that evening. Uh, just wanna clarify a quick update on a couple of uh insurance repair projects that I previously informed the board about, so uh, there are two repairs to town property recently. That were damaged by a motor vehicle accidents, uh, that were recently completed. Uh, one was the Korean and Vietnam War Veterans Memorial on the Town Common that was displaced. And another being the wood guard rail near the exit, um, to the Rice Complex on Emerald Street. Um, these were repairs that have been completed and were done at no cost to the town. Uh. Just providing a, a quick update on the, uh, the Congressman, Ockingfoss meeting and some of the follow-up there, uh, so the, the select board met with Congressman Ockingfoss. Uh, on August thirteenth, uh, as well as with Representative, State Representative Marcus Vaughn at the Rice Complex. Uh, where there's a discussion that took place around district priorities, uh, which was also followed by a tour of the complex. Um, feedback from the Congressman's office has been positive. Um, and they've actually contacted town administration to follow up on a lot of the topics that were brought up during the meeting, um, as part of our discussion. So I will be scheduling a meeting at that, that follow-up. Uh, I'd like to just provide a thank you to Jeff Plimpton and Bill Rice, uh, for the Recreation Department for hosting this at the Rice Complex that afternoon.
Yes, they did a great job.
Uh, and then the last update I have is on the right of first refusal for twenty ninety-five West Street, just to provide a financing timeline of where we're at. Uh, so members of Rentham's finance team and myself, uh, will be meeting with Standard and Force. Um, their rating agency for bonds, uh, tomorrow for a rating call on the town's upcoming, uh, debt issuance, one million eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, for the twenty ninety-five West Street land purchase, uh, Rentham currently holds a double eight plus, uh, rating with S and P. Uh, which we will be reevaluating during this meeting, um, every intent is that we will continue to affirm that rating. Uh, after the rating call tomorrow, uh, on September fourth, there will be a competitive bond sale. Um, where bids will be received on the bond offering. And then, once that bond sale takes place, we will then be coming forward at the subsequent select board meeting on September sixteenth. And the board will be asked, uh, to approve the bond sale officially. Now, assuming that our board approves that bond sale, uh, that will lead to the transfer of funds to the bond proceeds by the end of September. Which will facilitate an early October closing, puts us in line with the ninety day close, which was in the penance. So, come October, uh, the, the sale will be completed twenty ninety-five West Street.
Great.
And that concludes my report.
Sure, just a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, uh, Kentucky, have they signaled anything about, they talked about, you know, supporting the project? And, and, and maybe like a million dollars, is that, is that anything?
So there, so there was two sources of funding that were offered, and we, we communicated those at, at town meeting, one was the Kentucky Water Supply Board, and everyone being. Uh, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, um, two, two sums of money, um, put together totaling over one million dollars. Uh, so we have legal counsel currently working with, with both organizations. Uh, with the idea that we put a conservation restriction in place, it could meet the needs of all parties, but, um. And possibly, you know, we're, we're also hoping that, you know, if there's a strong conservation restriction in place, maybe there might not be any right of first refusal. That's, that's still to be seen, um, but, you know, we're having those conversations right now, um, between all parties. So that when we do have the sale and it does close, we can put that conservation restriction in place and get that funding that they. That they communicated to us in short order, which then gets received into the Community Preservation Act Fund, um, for future use. Um, for projects within the community.
Good, thank you.
So the bond payment, would, would we pay the bond payments from that, out of that land purchase, okay?
So, so the, so the bond payments, um, come out of the, the, the annual budget, so you actually appropriate them on an annual basis at the June town meeting.
Right.
And, but that, if we get the money from DCR and the Kentucky Water, we'll go back to the CPCs.
We'll, we'll go into the fund.
Into that fund.
Uh, so it goes to the CPC fund, so this would not get commingled with general fund money, carbon only, it would be under, uh. The CPC to recommend future projects utilizing that, that fund.
Or wouldn't we put it aside to pay down? The debt?
I mean, that, you could have some, the, the thing is with the debt.
Yeah.
Is when you do a bond issuance, you're usually required, and this is almost obvious, um, that the first ten years you can't even finance, you can't pay down.
Correct, but you'd put the money in the land bucket specifically to pay that. Down over the ten year of it, you know?
It would, I think, well, we, we did ten year, right? We, we, it'll be a ten year bond, yeah, so what I would say is this money, this money usually when it's received would come into, uh. And close out to undesigned fund balance, which is the CPC's equivalent of free cash, which they can use for multiple purposes. Um, so the CPC committee formulating your budget could make recommendations on how you believe that you're best utilizing.
Um, anything else?
Uh.
Are, are the negotiations, uh, or the legal documents that are being written about this conservation land? Giving us some latitude on what we might be able to do beyond. It's, you know, like a well or, or a water tank, that kind of thing.
Yeah, uh, so that was not part of the vote at town meeting. To allow for a conservation restriction to allow those certain exemptions, um, it has to be for the preservation of conservation land and, and open space. Uh, so with that being, being said, you know, for the, when we talk about Kentucky Water Supply Board, maybe if we have a really strong conservation restriction. Maybe they might not need a right of first refusal, because the ability to actually utilize that in the future for another purpose is very important, right?
So that would open the door to Roy's point, for potential use of a fu- future site of a well or.
I, I, I don't believe so.
So if there's a constant, even if there's a conservation restriction, we wouldn't be able to.
You know, for the, for the, for the one, to be used as part of the water supply.
Right.
But you could use, you could use it as a walkie, you can put trails up there.
Yeah, passive record.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Right. Yeah, okay, anything else? Anything else?
End of my report.
Okay, um, so at this time, thank you for that, Tom, uh, manager, uh, Tom Manager King, I'm tired. Uh, at this time, uh, uh, we're gonna enter into executive session, um, under MS General Law. Chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, discussion of strategy, discussion of strategy with respect to litigation, Gardner versus Town of Rentham. Probate Court Number N O two one E O O three O Q C. So this time, chair entertained a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to the mass general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A. To discuss the strategy with respect to litigation versus town, uh, litigation of Gardner versus Town of Rentham and to enter back into open session. For the purposes of adjournment only.
So.
Motion made by Selectman Anderson, second by Selectwoman Rose, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?